To the Brentwood School Board meeting, it is Monday, November the first, and I would ask that we all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
I just wanted to let everyone in the audience know that we do have a mask policy within all of SAU 16. Right now, we are on the mask matrix. We are within substantial, so we are asking that everyone does mask, please. If you do not have one, there are masks right outside the door in front of the office. Thank you. We have the right to call a non-public session at any time that we deem necessary or appropriate. We also definitely do have something that we will be going into non-public for at the end of this meeting. Yeah, I had a feeling.
Maybe you should have a table.
I asked. Okay. Can you hear me now? He did. Are you able to hear me? Okay. Can you hear me with the mask on? Can everybody? Okay, all right. Next is the approval of the minutes, and we'll start with the public minutes. Does anybody have anything on the public minutes?
I have a couple items.
Sure.
The bottom of page one.
Not on.
The public comment, A.J. Phillips. I suspect the J probably capitalized, and I'm also not quite sure what that comment said. Lack of the occasion and inability to give no notice to a decision. That doesn't make much sense the way I read it, but that may be.
Kyla, was it taken directly from the video?
I took it back and forth. But yeah, I did double check off the video, but I couldn't get that.
Okay.
It was all about the back and forth of the masks.
Yeah.
I think it's out of context, but I think what it's, it's just saying that there was a lack of communication in last-minute decision-making, right? It was like the Friday or the Saturday morning email, then the Monday morning switch, and then the Monday morn-
Okay.
I think it's just referencing that.
I get that, yeah.
So let's, how about we put inability to give ample notice to a decision, fair enough, instead of no notice? And then he can, people can refer back to the video. Are we all comfortable with that? Okay. And you had more, Brian?
Yep. Page two, 7.2. Mr. Q presented his monthly principals report, parentheses, oh, not parentheses, apostrophe on principals. And then, next line down, Rogers family, no apostrophe on Rogers. And then the next paragraph, the last line of that paragraph. First public comment can be directly related to the agenda, and the second public comment could be more generally based rather than general-based. And, and one more. And this is item nine. And it's about Allison's comment. Ms. Higgins spoke of the timeframe in which the numbers are posted. Sorry, wrong one. The first under number nine. Ms. Higgins discussed the protocol in which board members are responded to by email. I think it's in which board members respond to email. I don't want to put words in your mouth, but-
Well, it was us responding.
Yeah.
Responded to us. You're right.
So responding to email.
I have under number seven, three paragraphs up from the bottom. Ms. Litchfield asked if there is a, and it says public page. It was actually if there is a private page, do they still need to state that they'll be speaking as an individual? And then I also have under 11, public comment, no, excuse me. All right, second public comment. If you go all the way down where it's bolded, Mr. Duffy made a motion to enter a non-public session. Let's see, Ms. Higgins seconded. Could we just put motion passed 500, please? And then, I also had-
Do you want the same thing for the adjournment?
Oh, I thought it was on the, yeah, if it's not there, I thought it was. No, it's there because it said all I.
Oh.
So whatever, or we can do it consistently. I had another one, too, but I don't have two sheets. Okay, under the number seven, bold business. I have, it says Ms. Litchfield suggested that each person is only given one opportunity to speak during each public comment section. I can't remember whether or not I said that, so I would ask that either we strike the sentence, or if we want to keep it, we table the minutes until next time to confirm.
I'm okay with tabling to confirm. Because, I mean, that's a quote, that's, I mean, it's okay if you want to make sure that it makes sense to me.
All right. Does anybody have anything else?
I didn't have anything else.
All right, then I'm going to make a motion to table, please.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any, any nays or abstentions? All right, thank you. Next is the non-public minutes. Did anybody have anything?
I did not.
Okay. Do we have a motion to pass the non-public minutes?
I'll make a motion to pass the non-public minutes.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And any nays or abstentions? Nope, okay. They pass unanimously, thank you. Next is public comments. We just ask that when you rise to the microphone, that you please address the board directly. Each comment be limited to three minutes, and if you could just state your name and address. Thank you.
Just a letter, I'm going to re-read the board. There's whole copies for anybody who needs them.
Thank you.
Good evening, board. My name is Lois D. Young, and my husband and I have been Brentwood residents for 47 years. Our children attended and graduated from Swayze Central School, Exeter Junior and Senior High School. I have been an active member, and I'm currently active in Brentwood School and Town Government. I currently hold an elected position on the town, Brentwood Town Budget Committee and the Exeter Budget Advisory Committee. I attended your last school board meeting on October 4th. I was very confused regarding the board's decision and vote on, under old business 7.1, Public Comment Policy Review, B-E-D-H. Upon reviewing the minutes of that meeting, I would like to know. If you'd like me, I have in the letter the four things that were written, and I'll read them for you. Mrs. Bernard would like to change and add to number one. The school board advises that the purpose of the public input is to give the results of, excuse me, to give the residents of Brentwood, current staff, and other current guardians or caretakers the opportunity to address the board on items of concern affecting the community. Next sentence. Ms. Litchfield suggested that each person is only given one opportunity to speak during each public comment section. Third paragraph, quotation marks. This is, Mrs. Higgins suggested adding a number three, which would read, colon, "All speakers must be courteous and must speak to the issues," comma, "not the individual raising them. All comments and questions will be directed only to the chair. The chair will decide whether to recognize another board member or staff member to respond. The chair will not allow personal attacks or inappropriate language." I guess this is fourth paragraph, whatever, the fourth thing. Ms. Bernard suggested striking out the last paragraph. Now, my question. What exactly did Mrs. Bernard's motion, because it was written in the minutes, motion for above amendments actually pass? Which paragraph was stricken? There's no way, I would like to know from the board, and I would prefer it in writing, answer to that question.
Do we have that updated? Have we updated the policy?
It has, the last time I looked, it was not updated yet on the website, and I looked within the past couple of days.
Are we answering questions right now, or should we see if there's any more?
I can hear you.
So, so, okay.
Ms. D. Young did ask that we could respond in writing, so rather than try and shuffle through things now, maybe we should wait.
I just want to make sure I understand the questions, that's all.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, I'm just trying to-
Okay. All right. So, you're asking if her motion for the above amendments actually passed? Is that your first?
To ask you what did, can you read the question, sorry, to say. What exactly did Ms. Bernard's motion for the above amendments, which is what it says in the minutes, said motion for the above amendments actually passed? I don't, I can't tell from those four things what passed.
We just-
I think we should just-
Last paragraph was stricken.
Well, okay, so-
What's the paragraph, one sentence?
We can get back to you, we can get, we can get back to you in writing, but if I remember correctly, right, it's a paragraph that's just, it's very similar to what we added, we just wordsmithed it a little bit. So, what was stricken was, or taken away. Persons appearing before the board are reminded as a point of information that members of the board are without authority to act independently as individuals in official matters. Questions may be directed to an individual board member, however, answers must be deferred pending consideration by the full board. And all that it was changed to was, this is what you said, right?
So, I think the conversation was the fact that this was really related to responding to emails, like that things could be, I think that we thought that this was out of context to a public, to public comment.
Okay.
And that's why we struck it, because it didn't sit.
It didn't fit, okay.
It didn't fit, and, because we don't respond, like, I think that that's why we decided to strike it.
Okay. Yeah, if you throw any-
Excuse me, but you should be, your minutes, I'm quoting from your, on this paper, from your minutes. Your minutes should reflect everything you just, what you're, which we're not hearing in, by the way. What needs to be, what we need to know, and it's not in your minutes, and it's not, it wasn't here, and I was here for the meeting. I couldn't, those questions, I would like you to, you know, I'd like a detailed answer to the question, please.
So what we'll do is we'll get back to you in writing, number one. And then, number two, what you've brought up is something that we've discussed the last few meetings, that we're not necessarily capturing everything, and that's why under, on our minutes, we have put a link, we have put link to video, so if you were to go online, you can actually click on the link and watch the video.
But your minutes should look like that. I wonder if, I bet if we're not, I'm pretty good at making amendments here, and I couldn't get it.
I wonder if we're doing something like revising a policy? If we include with the minutes, like, a copy of the policy that we vote, like, the revised new policy that we voted on? Because then you would be able to-
Right.
-see what it reflects. So maybe that's a solution, is just with the minutes including that revised policy.
You know, I think that's a great idea, and we're going to go, we're going, we tabled the minutes anyway, so why don't we please attach a copy of the policy, and we'll have it next time? Okay.
Well, and you could even add to where it says, Ms. Bernard suggested striking out the last paragraph, which currently reads, and then the paragraph that we're striking out. So it's clear that that's the paragraph that they're talking about.
Right. Which we would, we can, but we also amend it when we do the-
Yeah. Chris, what is the process? Because we changed the policy, what's the process for getting the policy updated and posted? The new policy's up there.
How long has it been up there?
I just checked, and it was the old one.
Yeah. Oh, that's why, yeah, since a few days.
And it's B-E-D-H. So mine, when I load it, is the old one, so maybe it's like a big thing.
All right, perfect, thank you. So we'll, we'll update it, and we'll get back to you in writing.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we have any other public comment today?
My name's Mike Newber. Been a resident of the town for about 10 years. I have a three and a five-year-old in the school. I'm here to talk about these. These don't work. We currently are judging our kids based off of new cases. We all know the PCR test returns false positives over and over again. Currently, in Rockingham County, we have 453 active cases. That's 0.14% of our population, yet my five-year-old is to wear this thing seven hours a day. We all know that five minutes of restricted oxygen flow to the brain causes brain cells to die. I feel like I'm sending my kids to Swayze to kill brain cells. This needs to stop. Thanks.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment?
Hi, my name is Kim Leo, 23 Labrou Street. I understand Facilities is going to talk tonight. I'd sent an email Friday, is it Thursday or Friday, about some updates that I see maintenance-wise for the playground. I'm hoping that gets addressed as we are doing more outside time. I know you guys are doing an awesome job. And I would also like to address the mask issue and suggest that we continue with what the Joint Board went with, and all kids, whether vaccine level, stay masked until such time that the elementary school-aged kids have an appropriate amount of time to get access to the vaccine. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment tonight?
Jim Johnson, Shannon Way. With all due respect, Principal Q, I'm directing this to the board. In the meeting minutes, it states that they want all letters, and I assume right to knows, to go directly to him. You are our representatives. You were elected to this position. You represent us. If we give something to you, you are to give it to the principal, and he will give it to the assistant superintendent or whoever is going to handle it. But we do not have contact with principals or superintendents.
Thank you. Do we have any further public comment tonight? No. Good. Seeing as none, I'm going to move on to the visitors. Ken, would you mind joining us? Special for you.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We don't let just anyone sit up here, you know. We have. That's true. I'm just going to read very quickly, is that all right with you, if I read the background?
Oh, sure.
Okay. So I received a letter on October the 6th from Ken, and it's, it's just as the school board chair. Dear Melissa, impact fees as defined by RSA 674:21B were adopted by the town of Brentwood in 2001. An impact fee is a one-time payment imposed by a local government on a property developer. The fee is meant to offset the financial impact a new development places on public infrastructure. The objective of the assessment is to recover the capital cost of providing adequate facilities for average dwelling units in Brentwood. In order to ensure that our impact fee assessments accommodate new growth and that the fee represents a proportionate share of the capital improvement cost, it is recommended that the fee schedule is reviewed and revised every five to seven years in conjunction with our capital improvements plan. The last revision was conducted in 2014. The town of Brentwood is preparing to contract with BCM Planning LLC to perform a revision in 2022 at an estimated cost of $7,500 to $8,500. We ask that the school board consider paying 50% of the cost. If you have any questions regarding the cost or scope, please contact Karen Clement at the town offices. Sincerely, Ken Christensen, Board of the Selectman Chair. So we've invited Ken here tonight, just so you could educate us about this.
All right.
And thank you so much for coming and-
My pleasure. We had a revision town-wide two years ago, so we know that the values of our property have increased. So we thought at this point it was appropriate to do a reevaluation and recalculation. Currently, for the year 2021, the total impact fee for a residential lot developed after 2001 is $9,389. The school system receives a total of $6,000. 13 and change goes to Swayze, $949 goes to the middle school, and $1,793 goes to the high school. The remaining $3,621 goes to the town for fire, police, rec, and library. So, in the past, the last time that we did this, at that time, the school board did assist and pay half of the cost.
Can we stop you for one second? So, okay, the first number that you mentioned, the $9,389?
Yes.
Is that-
That's the total impact fee for a residential piece of property.
Okay. And that's, is that the average?
Well, there is no average.
Oh, I thought it was, so, can you, like, just total layman terms, I had always thought it was per thousand, so that's why I'm curious.
No, the, the actual, the 2,000, first of all, we have a two-acre zoning board rule-
Okay.
-that all houses must be two acres, except for senior citizens, cluster housing, and of course, seniors and over 55 communities do not pay the school portion, they pay the town portion.
So, on a, on a two-acre lot, the impact fee is always that of-
Approximately, yeah.
Okay.
$93.89 total?
I wish it was $93.
$9,000, okay, $9,000, that's what I thought by schools.
And so you said 6,000 was schools, and then you gave, like, percent, like, you gave 13, 36, and 17. That's, I wasn't sure how, what, if that was a percent?
No. By school, based on the population, it's broken down, for Swayze, it's 1352, excuse me, $3,025.50 to be precise. The middle school gets $949.63, and the high school gets 1,793.37. The town portion is 3,621.
And 55-plus communities don't pay into the school portion?
No. There are some provisions in the Homeowners Association rules that if, if there are up to 20% that are sold to non-se seniors, then the appropriate amount of money is collected to include the school portion. With three, three ponds of the 117 homes, to the best of my knowledge, not one has students that come to Swayze, the middle school or high school.
So, because they don't have students at the school, they don't have to pay, I'm trying to understand why there's an exemption?
The law allows the exemption.
Ms. Ken?
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I thought she was talking.
No.
Madam?
Yes. The, so, so why does the law, is, so that's something that we don't have control over?
I wasn't here when they made the law, I'm sorry, but the law is the law, we follow it to its letter.
Can we change the law?
By all means, go right ahead.
Okay.
Is it, is it state, or is it tax?
No, it's state. RSA 674:21.
Which you put in the first four words, got you. Okay. Thanks, Ken.
And just to be, like, totally clear, it, the law is that they cannot pay impact fees, or they don't have to pay impact fees?
I don't know the difference.
Because this is not, like, an individual buying a house, right? It's the developer, when they make a deal with the town.
Yeah, when the plan is submitted to the planning board, the actual impact fees are listed on the Melard that is filed with the county records and clerk. When a building permit is issued, that is also listed on the building permit.
And so when you reassess, revise, revise, I think you used your word, revision, it's that 9,389, that's what you're revising, is that, should that be up or down based on home value?
Well, based on home values and the assessment that occurred two years ago. I'm assuming that it should increase.
Is it typical that we've split the cost in the past?
We have one, one other time.
Was that 2014 or prior?
Yes. I believe I was the instigator then, in those days also.
It, just based on this chart, I think you gave us this chart, it looks like the majority of properties fall under that 55-plus, looks like they're mostly three ponds.
That's because of three ponds, yeah.
Yep. So, would it maybe be more appropriate for us to pay the proportion that corresponds to how much we actually get in fees, or no? Am I thinking about this the wrong way?
Well, the law is pretty specific. You get what the law allows.
I think she's thinking that if, if, like, on average, let's say, in the past couple of years, we've only received 30% of impact fees because of over 55, should the school only pay 30%? Like, you know what I mean, versus a 50-50 split? Okay.
I have a question.
Sure.
So the Brentwood taxpayers are going to pay it regardless.
That's correct.
What does it matter if it's in your budget or our budget?
We thought we'd share it with you, that's all. What's wrong with being shared?
Because we'd rather you share by giving, not taking.
Well, there's two parts to that. We give and we take. And it's our turn to take.
And is this something, this might sound like kind of dumb, just not knowing how other parts of the town budget work, but is- But is this like the rec department is contributing some of that fee? And the, like, other town?
They're all the same budget, though.
They're, but the rec?
Well, actually, the library, though, does the library?
Like, just, that might be a bad question.
Well, the library does have their own set of rules and regulations. But their budget is approved by us.
We're the only budget that's not approved by the selectmen?
That's correct. I didn't really think it would be a problem. I thought I'd be home eating my supper by now.
I know, we're just trying to learn. It's, we haven't, I don't remember it from 2014.
Well, we have gotten older, you're right.
Me too. Me too.
So you're asking us to pay $3,500 or something?
No, we're not. We're asking you to pay half of what the invoice is.
Thirty, okay.
What's their estimate?
More, closer forward.
I should have brought my boxing gloves, I think.
Is this something we need to vote on right now?
No. The, I, the reason I gave you the package, there's a lot of information there. And if, any further questions, we would appreciate hearing from you through Karen. Then she'll pass it on to the board.
When are you planning on doing this?
Probably in December or January.
Okay. I'm sorry, it's not public comment. I apologize. Please sit down. Um, how many other, do other towns do this typically, too?
Oh, I'm sure. It, it's a form of revenue.
Okay. Um, so I just wanna ask the board, if we wanna, if we wanna put this off for another month, that's fine. But it's Brentwood taxpayer money anyway. We probably have it in our budget. So I'm just curious, if we decide to put it off, what is it that we're looking to figure out to do that?
But it doesn't really make any difference to me. We're paying it one way or the other.
I would agree.
It seems.
We will accept your.
I think that you should keep it in your own budget, personally.
I'm sure you do.
But I would vote to support it if that was what the will of the board.
I'd like it in your budget.
Well, so I, I have a question. Can he keep it in his budget, but we can still offer him money to offset that? But he keeps it as an appropriation in his budget?
I think we're splitting hairs.
Um, so my question on it is just like clarification on the law that's saying that 55-plus developers cannot pay impact. So that's like, it's not even a question about this necessarily. It's just, is it a cannot or a do not have to? But we can, I can like Google that.
Well, I think it's codified by saying do not. You're the attorney. I, I'm looking for a GED, give me a break.
You can look it up.
I can't pull the RSA up because of the, I'm having internet issues. So I don't wanna make a decision. I mean, first of all, really, six point half dozen the other as far as either we stump up $4,000 now or the town gets $4,000 when we return excess funds at the end of the school year. I think it's probably worth. It's probably worth asking Molly and the administration, is there, are there the funds to do that? But since it doesn't matter either way, since the town's gonna get the money back and it's a town function to run that, my preference is for it to be in the town budget. But again, really.
My thought is.
Cargo pocket, cargo pocket.
Exactly. So if I, my suggestion is if you were to make a motion, I would throw out there that somehow if we could just word it that we agree to do this, but we're not setting precedents or something, you know what I mean, something like that.
So every five to seven years, we're gonna do it based on the economy and sort of housing market? And it makes sense, like, in theory, right? The idea is that we're gonna get higher impact fees.
That's correct.
Right? Like, that's, we're doing it because we can get more money to offset the cost of, right? So it behooves us to do it. There's some benefit to us to do it. Right? Honestly, I just don't care. Are you asking me to make a motion? Because nobody else wants to do that.
I don't mind making the motion, I just don't usually make the motions.
We're waiting on you, Allison.
What do you guys think?
Do, okay. Chris, do you have your? What do your feedbacks? Do you?
Do you have an opinion?
I like to see that.
We reap the benefits this year from the impact.
We have, yeah.
However, there is law on how we can use the impact fees. Usually it's a bond. You don't have any bonds coming up, so you might not be able to get the money. So again, you, you did reap the benefits this year. I think it was, of course, $30,000 that came back to you.
That's correct.
So again.
You can't hear anything, are you?
Yeah, I don't know that your microphone's on. I know, you, I, I know you pulled down your mask and everything. Um, okay, so the, the, um, the impact fees, so they're for capital improvements. So a capital improvement could be technically speaking even playground equipment, couldn't it? Because we're, we have more students coming on board and we're trying to?
No, under the RSA, when Gordon Graham was here, it would be because you're, you had to grow your school or your footplant of your school because of new, new families moving into Brentwood. So there's really specific, when a school bond comes up, because you're expanding your footprint, that's the, the best way in which to use your impact fees. So again, we could always get legal guidance on what we could use the impact fees for, but the, the best way to use them is for any type of school bond or increase of your actual, you know, physical plant or school, school blueprint.
If we don't use them or accept them, do they just sit there until we can? Or do we lose?
Until they run out. There's a time limit on the impact fees.
Okay.
Okay, so my two cents worth, it's, it's Brentwood taxpayer money anyway. Um, I don't know that I wanna nickel and dime the Board of Selectmen at this point in time. Just my two cents worth. Um, I, I would say so we have three options. Either we table it, um, we make a motion not to, or we make a motion to do it. So I'm open to anything. But if we don't, unless we have further discussion, I would say why don't we do one of the above?
I think I would be in favor of tabling it, just because my knowledge, right, in this moment of impact fees is very small, but that would be.
Are you busy the first Monday in December, Ken?
When?
The first Monday in December.
No, but I wanna assure you, I will not be here in seven years. I will be 88 and I won't be present.
Okay. Letty, do you have an opinion?
I mean, I, I, yeah, I, I, I think I'm with Megan. I'm, I, I would like to learn more about this RSA than this so-called exemption. Because, because if most of the properties are properties that we can't even get impact fees from, and maybe we don't have anything to spend the impact fee money on, then I.
Yeah, I mean, we had, and we should just have it again, Chris, it was probably before your time, but we had somebody a few years ago come in. Maybe Bill Furbish did it for us, I don't honestly know.
He did, he brought in an attorney for us.
He brought in somebody and they went into detail about how. And like, I remember the conversation, like, if we wanted to like build, I'm just using this as an example, not that we wanna do this, but like, if we wanted to put in like a really nice baseball diamond in Mrs. Thomas's field out here, maybe with some lights that had town use of, like, it was new, that was something that we could do. But like, it was not like a revision of something that we currently had. But they went through it in a decent amount of detail, what you could and couldn't do with it. Um, and then, of course, made the recommendation that we just use it for our bond and not explore any of those. But, I mean, we have talked about like, you know, over the years, like, uh, multi-purpose space for theater and court, like, you know, something besides this? Like, I think it would just be worth having the conversation, or for, to learn. I mean, you can read, but having the conversation.
I'm wondering if we should, I don't disagree with you. I'm just wondering if we should research it? Because I think we have to pay for the attorney to come or get the attorney's advice versus researching it. But I just wanna say, I know it's only November, but we have an unreserved fund balance of $550,000 and we're a town of 4,600 people. So the Board of Selectmen is just asking us to split something in half and we're gonna say, no, we're not willing to give up to $4,000.
That's not what I'm saying.
What are you saying?
I'm saying I wanna learn more before I say yes or no. I can't speak for anyone else, but I, I don't wanna say yes or no until I have a better understanding.
And you're not doing it until December anyway, is that correct?
Or, or thereabouts, yeah.
So I just, again, like a, I guess a board thing is, if you got it on October 6th, is this something that you could forward out to the, forward to us before we're in the meeting? Or is that like just?
It came to us.
Visited?
The letter.
It was in the packet and all I had was the letter.
The le, oh, I thought it was all of the?
The packet we got tonight, no.
The packets, okay.
All right, so is that Brian and Allison, is that what you'd like to do as well? Table or?
I'd like to table, yes.
Okay. Sorry, Ken.
All right, thank you so much.
Rusty. You're up.
All right, good evening. Hopefully everybody can hear me. Melissa, if I could address Ms. Leo, I would like to, can I start with that? You can't hear me at all. Tim, can this mic go any louder? Test one, two. I'm speaking right into it and, is that better? Is that okay? I get a little bit of a feedback, but.
Oh, Rusty, is this about the impact fees?
Didn't you ask me to speak about the facilities?
Oh, no. I just got excited when you looked at, okay.
No, it was about the email that was sent regarding the playground. Can I address that?
Oh, yes, okay.
Uh, she's earned and owed that. When I saw the pictures, I was likewise disturbed at the condition of the playground. So I looked into this and sent my head of grounds out first thing this morning. What we have is a preventative maintenance program that the playground is to be inspected each month. I could read the entire list, but I'll just read some of the critical ones. Visually verify that all connecting hardware is in place. Verify there are no sharp points, corners, edges. Uh, no bolts are missing. Clearly, the pictures that you showed, that was not the case. I have a work order confirmation that it was inspected on the 30th less, just over a month ago. We played, replaced one bolt on the ladder. A month before that, in August, same thing. Back in June, no problems found. Clearly, this is bogus. Uh, that's not correct. It's, and I'll take care of it. And I apologize for that, but this is clearly not the state of, of the playground. And, but this was what was reported back to me. And I, I count on people to reliably report back to me. It will be resolved, I can guarantee you that. But I appreciate you sending me the photo so that I could, now I'm aware of it.
May I address Rusty for a second? May I address Rusty for a quick moment?
He's seen the pictures, is it different?
I know, I just want to address that something, just quickly.
Sure.
Thank you very much for taking those photos seriously. It wasn't meant to be anything other than a hey. It was probably looked over. I know there are a few things that definitely were a red flag as a parent, but thank you very much for sending someone out and addressing that immediately.
We have, we have a company coming out on Wednesday called Playworld that handles all of our playgrounds and will get it resolved. But you're very kind to say it might have been overlooked. This is beyond that and, and I'll fix it.
I understand that, but thank you very much. As my kids love playing on the playgrounds.
Sure.
And I know others do. And I truly appreciate that you just said that quickly.
Safety is, is what it's all about.
Thank you.
Thank you. So going forward, we did have a, I was asked to bring my maintenance folks over to Swayze, which we, we do annually. And so we have a, a carpenter, a plumber, electrician, an HVAC tech, a painter. And then we walk around and, and look for projects that may be necessary. And we have come up with a list. Some are ongoing now, as you're aware. For instance, the AC unit, the rooftop unit that you approved, that the mechanicals are installed on the roof, the, the piping is done. Uh, the coil and the testing would take place during the Christmas break. Um, it is an AC unit, so we're not terribly worried about it at this time. You may have noticed the big tree has been removed. That was a project that we did in the current year. I had not one, but two arborists come out to inspect it to make sure the opinion was correct. And the first one automatically said it needs to be moved. The second one thought for $2,500 and then $1,500 a year after that. It may be okay. And I know students from Swayze stand under that maybe wasn't nearly good enough. And then that's why it's gone. What we got proposed coming up is for, something that I asked for a year and a half ago when I first started this position, was the two front doors. I believe this is the only school in SAU 16 that does not have handicap automatic door openers. It's, I feel it's a, it's not ADA mandate. We don't have to, because if somebody will hold the door. But it's something I think we should do, we would want to do. And there would be two openers, one for the exterior door, one for the interior door once you get into the vestibule. It's a fairly complex setup, but we've done it lots of times at a bunch of other schools. Obviously, you just can't press the door outside and let anybody in. They would have to show, we'd give them a card. If they swipe first, then they're granted access. You hit the button and the door opens, so there's security that way.
Rusty?
Yes.
May I ask you a question? We were given a list, a facilities list, the board was. Anything that states, um, now, or now 2021, done in summer 2021 or 2021, all of that list has already been budgeted for. It's nothing that we need to approve money for tonight, is it?
I don't believe you've ever discussed the, the handicapped openers.
You've approved the, the facilities project, so we've always used what comes up during the year.
What's in the line item, right?
$53,400. So the only thing that we would ask for this year that's not budgeted, Melissa, and that was part of the walkthrough, is the patch repair for the roof, which was pretty significant. So after the projects that Rusty had talked about, we have $11,000, close to $12,000 remaining in that project line, the $53,400. And the initial quote we got for the roof repair was $34,850. So it was about $22,000 delta that we did not budget for this year for projects that we would ask to be approved by the board because it is significant wear and tear and leaking in different portions of the building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so, okay, so going forward, what we're proposing for the upcoming year, I guess that with the art room. Uh, they had asked to replace the sink in the attached plumbing. Um, it's not the correct height. And we had our plumber, Paul Abraide, quote, $2,000 to do that. That would be for the summer of '22.
Rusty, could I also, I'm sorry, on that one?
Yep.
Is that the, what used to be the art room in the modular or the?
It's a brand new art room.
Okay.
One sec, the new one, yep, okay. We have three rooftop units that are 25, probably plus, years old. One you're replacing now, there's three remaining. I spoke to our HVAC tech and asked him to prioritize which ones should be, which order would be the highest level of concern. And he stated the office one would, one that he would like to do first because that not only produces air conditioning, but also heat. So that was a pretty obvious reason. He's asked him what kind of a maintenance schedule he's been there. He says he's worked on it lots and lots of times. He can continue to fix it, but we spent so much time and energy on it, it's, it's well beyond, what he told me was the general life expectancy. So that would be our first choice as far as the rooftop units. The other two are AC units only, and that's the one for the library and also the one for the technology lab here. So those could be done in 2023 is what we're thinking on that. The fire alarm, I can speak to personally because it's, I take care of that portion of it and I did before I took this position. We've had many service calls. I was called out here the other night at 1:30 or so for a low battery condition. It dings me if there's any condition, and I don't mind that. But there's been lots of service calls. We used Justin Barker from Superior Fire. It's an old simplex system. It's not something we have to do now, but I was really hoping the service calls would stop. They seem to have calmed down some, but I don't wanna put good money after bad. And so that's where we stand with that. That's the one quote I have. I believe I can do a little bit better than that, but for budgetary reasons, I gave you that one. We put a new system in over at Newfields, which was less than that. It's not as big as the school, but again, I'm not sure. But as you know, anything over $10,000 would be a mandatory three bids anyway. So I would look into that, but that's the price I have in hand for this school. The paving, we, we've discussed before. Again, our strategy there was to put the base coat in and let that sit. We use Bell &amp; Flynn a lot, so I spoke to John Bell. And we start with the base coat and we let that stay for at least five years. Sometimes we can even get six, maybe even a little more than that. Then we do the finish coat after that. So by doing that. So by doing that, we can extend the life. And much like what we did at the high school, we got approximately 15 years by the time we got done doing it in that way, not putting both the base and the finish. We would certainly monitor the situation, but if we stay on top of it before it gets as bad as it is now, for instance, out back, I'm sure everybody's seen that, we don't have to reclaim it. We could actually seal it and use that as a base. And it's a considerable savings if we stay on top of the paving. So that was, you see, the price for that was $154. That was the entire Swayze, including the road behind the modular. It's everything you see besides, except for the sidewalks. Sidewalk, same deal. We do the same thing with the base coat, wait, and then do the finish coat. In five, six years, the only additional cost by doing that is we have to restripe it. So we stripe all the lines. Obviously, you put a new finish coat on and we have to restripe them again. So that's an extra cost, but it buys us time and it works out well. It's a good program that we've used at other, other schools. The lots that have gone way beyond that point, I'm sure we wish we had done it. But like behind the Y, which is the SST parking lot, that's much more costly because we have to start from scratch with it. Something way down the road was, well, 2024, not too far, I guess, was a hot water heater. We're working on quotes for that. And of course, the boilers, as they get older, we're just working on quotes. We're not saying they need to be replaced, but as they get older, it's just wise to have these numbers in hand. And we certainly would do that. See if there's anything else here. One other item was the controls. And I mentioned to the board when we did a little walkthrough. There's a section of the school, which we did the energy recovery units when COVID hit to make sure everybody was safe. What we don't have with those is the controls to control them through our software, which we do at every school. A lot of this school is set up with the controls. So our HVAC tech remotely can verify that everything's running, the valves are running. Then they purge the air at the end of the day so it's safer. And then they also bring in fresh air early in the morning. It's all controlled remotely. What you currently have in those areas where we did the 10 energy recovery units is a manual switch in the classrooms, far from optimum. But if they're on, you're getting the exchange we need, keeping everybody safe. So I instruct our custodians, make sure those are running. Ideally, we would have control back at our office so we could verify they, we know they're running. We know when they're not running. We know the temperature. We can set all of those set points. It's a big deal, something you might want to consider. At the time, it was expensive enough just to get those energy recovery units. So we went that route. But to get full control and then everything is verified, schedules. If there's an event coming on, whichever room it is, we can tell that room, come on, set the temp, do the exchange, everything that you'd want. So it is costly because there's a bunch of mechanical work that has to be done to add the controls. But something you may want to consider. Chris may want to talk about the possibility of the grant.
Yeah, correct. So about a week and a half ago, we were alerted. Melissa sent it to us as well as the state about a seed grant. It's a competitive grant through the state of New Hampshire that has a list of different criteria. So our grant management, our grant manager has met with Dan Westmoreland about trying to put this in and putting together an application. The most difficult part is trying to meet the state's deadline. It has to be put in place by June 30th of 2022. So if we can assure that it can be done there, we will make sure that we write the grant so that we would only have to pay 20% of this cost and the state would pay the rest of it. So that's something that we're looking to do and they met this morning. So it's just timelines. So hopefully be able to report back to you in December where we're at with that grant because it needs to be submitted on November 15th.
And the art room, are we planning to keep Mrs. Buswell in that room permanently?
So we wanted to put together a comprehensive list also last year at the time. The public asked, what's in your project line? So really wanted to be aware of the different projects we're doing and why we're doing it. And also plan it out so we're not having large spikes of needed costs in our project line unless it's absolutely necessary. So that was the discussion we had. And so this is the plan and thank you Rusty and your crew for coming over and getting the detailed work and quotes. And again, we know quotes are changing, you know, pretty frequently. So the only action I'd ask for you today is that consideration about the roof patch to be able to at least secure it. We just did this in another district as well. We were able to secure it and only pay a portion to make sure that we could have the supplies. We got three quotes on that because they don't have, they can't even get the materials until the summer. But we were able to secure the quote with the other boards so that they could start the work as of when the summer and the supplies come in.
So can I just ask, so this plan that you sent us out this afternoon, so the $41,000, that is the sum of everything above that?
Correct.
And in, I'm sorry, I shouldn't, what is in our budget for that line?
$53,400 is in our project maintenance line.
Five, three, four, okay. And so then we would use the rest of that towards the roof repair, but then probably have to go to the maintenance fund?
That, or we have been alerted that we will be getting health trust money back in the surplus. Once that comes back, you know, we're looking, that looks like mid 40s for y'all, but we'll get a definite. So Molly's put that. At that time, I'd come in front at a public hearing and ask to accept and spend, spend it specifically on facilities.
On the facilities, okay. And the roof, so clearly we all saw it. I think, I can't imagine that we, was that? But is it, it's not just a patch, like we're repair, like we're replacing a section of the roof?
Yeah, Mr. Lister can talk more about it, but it's putting the rubberize.
That's correct. That's a replacement.
A replacement of the roof in that section?
Yes.
So again, I'd secure three quotes. So really the motion I'd ask is that we can begin securing quotes to get the roof pa, roof replacement so that we would have the materials in time for the summer to do the work.
So that was going to be my question, that the timeline on this is waiting until the summer?
Yeah, unfortunately, all the companies, it's the materials coming in. We just did this last week. We did a special meeting in Kensington to actually get it. And they guaranteed that by having the money and putting down a down payment that we would be on the top of the list to get all the materials for the start of the summer.
And with our plan for the winter month.
Mr. Lister's crew is going to take care of it as best, best he can.
I'll send them back again, as you saw, and we'll do the best we can.
Got lots of shoveling of the roof.
So you want a motion from us to go out and get the quote and approve the work?
Correct.
And?
I would say up to a certain dollar amount though.
Up to? Up to this $3,500, $35,000, just $3,500, if that's what you could have. You can replace one square.
Ten's money.
$35,000. I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
I had another question too, and that's just regarding everything else that's on here. We've been talking about paving, for example, for years now. Are these, whether it be the paving or the fire system, are these things that we should consider doing warrant articles for? Whether it be the entire cost or 50%, well, portions of it for the paving over the next few years, two or three years? And the fire system, whether we do all now or over one or two years? But is this something that we should consider? Otherwise, it's going to shoot our budget through the roof.
Yeah, I mean, the paving is a good one. I think we could, if we look at the project list going forward, we can incorporate the fire alarm without our maintenance line going up significantly. However, when you get that $154,000, that could be an idea for that to be a separate warrant article. However, if it's voted down, we can't do anything with it if we find, you know.
But I thought that that's why we've been putting money in the maintenance fund, to get to that point that we could pay. I mean, we're only one, I mean, we're only one, one cycle left short of that.
But then we'd wipe it out.
We would wipe it out.
I don't know that you'd want to do that. You need it for emergencies.
Yeah.
I, in my opinion, I would say we have time to think about it because we're not going to vote on our proposed budget until December. Why don't we think about incrementally what we want to do? It would, no means no, only for one cycle.
Correct.
And if we needed to patch it, I would think we could patch it. That's safety, right, versus doing an entire, entire pave job, for lack of a better way to put it.
You can do it in stages as well, much like what we're doing at the high school now and have been. You don't have to do it all. We could pick the worst or whatever you choose, but it certainly isn't required that you do it all at once.
What, what would you recommend that we consider for next month? And you can get back to us if I'm putting you on the spot.
Yeah, I probably would come back out with John Bell and look at it and get an honest evaluation of, you know, what would be the most prudent way to proceed if we're going to do it in stages, how should we? We did that at the high school and other campuses as well. Looks like we'll be doing it at CMS. So it's, I could certainly get them out and get back to you as to an alternative to doing it all at once.
All right, that's perfect. So why don't we think about that for next time?
Okay.
All right. Thank you so much, Rusty.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
And I'm sure you don't want to stay, so if you want to go. You want to stay, you can stay. And then next, we have the principal's report.
Thank you, thank you very much. I, we have a few presentations tonight, so I'd like to yield the first portion of my report to our talented presenters. We're going to start with Lisa Brown, who is our esteemed teacher and tech integrator. Sorry, thanks for the critique and feedback, Mrs. Brown. No, Mrs. Brown is a fantastic teacher and I'm looking forward to her sharing the work that she does with our students here. So Mrs. Brown, hit it.
So my husband always tells me, be careful what you ask for because you're asking me to talk about something that I'm so passionate about and you already are an hour into your meeting, so buckle up. Here we go. So for those of you in the audience and for those of you on the board who don't know me, I have been here, this is my 16th year. Twelve of those years, I taught grades two to grade five. In the last four years, I have been in the STEAM lab. So let's see what that looks like, what will say this works for us. So in the STEAM lab, when you, when you think about this, some people are, what is STEAM? I know I tell a lot of the new kids that show up in my space. If they were saying you were going to PE or going to art, you would have in your head what you were going to do when you got there. When they tell new students, you're going to the STEAM lab, there could be panic. They might not really understand where they're going. So STEAM and STEM are very much interchangeable at this point. STEM is really more the scientific, science, technology, engineering, and math, where STEAM really brings in the creativity, brings in more problem solving. If you think like Leonardo da Vinci, that's more where the STEAM portion comes in. So that's really why when we, actually, when I interviewed for it, it was a STEM position and I said that I would like it to become a STEAM position. So that's really where that name change came. If you look at our graduate, this is an SAU 16 portrait of a graduate. This was put together with a group of teachers who came together to work on this. And in gold are all the words that I really think we focus on when we're in the STEAM lab. So our kindergarten students through fifth grade are already working on our competencies to graduate from SAU 16. So it states, each graduate demonstrates engaged learning and citizenship through the ability to solve problems independently and collaboratively with perseverance and resilience and communicate solutions with confidence, competence, and empathy. And this is really from kindergarten up. This is what we work on every day in our space. And that's pretty heavy. When you think about, that's what we want our seniors to be able to do. Well, that's what I expect the students who come to my space to be able to work on. We're developing those, those same skills. In addition to that, every year, kind of revamping, reworking, talking to the other SAU STEAM and STEM teachers, we really look at the 21st century skills. So beyond graduating here from SAU 16, what are those skills that we feel like our students are going to need moving forward? So right away, when you look at that learning and innovation, the four Cs, again, is that critical thinking, the problem solving, innovation, communication, and collaboration. I would also put compromise in there. That was a big word we've been talking about the last couple of weeks in our space, is how to compromise when you have to work with others. And one little boy said to me, I need to conference with you. This compromising is really hard when you're between like the ages of eight and 10. And I said, news for you, it's still hard when you're 50. So it's, it's really something that we're working on those skills of how do we compromise with each other? Then as you move across that digital literacy, I feel like this is a really important piece to start working on with our kids as early as we possibly can. One of those really is when we were talking about ICT, which is really that critical thinking when students are looking online, digital citizenship, knowing how to use technology safely, healthily, responsibly, and ethically. Also, information literacy is the ability for them to find information online, evaluate, organize, use, and communicate all of that information. And then media literacy is the ability to critically think about media messages that we receive. And I found this really interesting because this is something that I really want to work on more this year, that our kindergartners see about 70 different types of media every single day. So how do they critically think about what they're seeing? And that means like TV, hearing on the radio, something that might come up when they're on their computers or their iPads. And then if you move over to career in life, being here at Swayze School is growth mindset. So that being flexible and adaptable depending on what's happening in that space, taking the initiative, having self-direction. And then when we talk about DEIJ, that has been such a hot topic that everyone's talking about, social and cross-cultural interaction in the lab. That would look like talking to kids about the ability, ability to effectively interact with others in diverse groups and situations. So that might mean that we're connecting with people in a different part of the country and we're sharing ideas and working together. And that's really what DEIJ in my space would look like. It's just how do we work with others who might be different from us or have a different perspective? And so moving on, this was my space four years ago. Mr. Q said, here you go. This is where you get to go. And this was really a space that teachers would take their students to once a week. Every teacher was responsible for going into the computer lab and teaching our students how to use the computer. So if you could imagine 18 different teachers going in there, everybody's level of understanding of technology was very different. So some students, if you hit certain teachers in a certain pattern, could end up in fifth grade and be a very strong tech student where teachers, if you had gone in a different path, might not be as strong. So it was really helpful to think about how can we put somebody in this position that could be consistent, providing the students with a consistent programming. And so this is what our Swayze STEAM lab looks like now. I'm just going to pause and enjoy. I love, I love the space. It's a great space. It's very adaptable. We can move those tables. We use it very differently all the time. The kids come in, things are on the floor. This is a very clean picture of it right now. There is so much going on in this space. But it is, it is wonderful. It is fun for the kids to come in and it's always an engaging and awfully noisy at times space to be at. So I think this will really kind of help you in the last four years to kind of look at what this position has looked like. So the first two years, the STEAM position was broken down. It's a STEAM teacher for 60% and a tech integrator for 40%. So it's a 100% position. I am here five days a week. 60% of that time, I was teaching classes. And 40% of that time, it was pushing into classrooms, collaborating with teachers, providing professional development. However, on March 13th, 2021, technology support became critical. We transitioned from being in person to all of a sudden, everybody was teaching online and learning online. And my job went through the roof at that point. So it was a lot of working with Katie and Ron to prepare our students. It was helping staff figure out how do we, how do we teach using Zoom? It was creating a website for parents to go on to, kids to get their work. So that really took a big change. Last year, coming back in, our day was a little bit shorter, the way it was broken down. So it really looked like my STEAM teaching position was 80%. So, it really looked like my STEAM teaching position was 80% and tech integrator was 20%. And again, it was helping out and doing teachers, helping teachers with technology, helping students who were having difficulty at home, trying to figure out how to use their devices or having public devices. That was really a lot of that 20% of that time. At that time, for that second year, at the end, I believe, of that second year, the school board voted to allow me to have a second or an additional timeframe with kids. We no longer, we didn't brief, we didn't fill a PE one-day-a-week position. And so, I was able to collect that, the little, one portion. So, what happens is now I am a STEAM teacher, I still teach five days a week. 80% of my time is with classes, but now I teach 24 classes a week. And then I have six open blocks during the week that I can provide professional development, tech integration, collaboration, or in the afternoon, provide tech support for students and teachers. So, that's really how the program, as a position as a teacher, has, has changed. And then, so what happens when you're in the STEAM lab? So, at any time, these are the four components that really are focused on. There are some other things that might be not as important as these, but these are the four main pillars that happen in the, the lab. So, engineering is a huge one. It's the design process, it comes right out of next-gen science standards. So, I follow that whole design process of ask, imagine, plan, create, test, improve, test again, and present. And we're really working more and more on presenting in real-world experiences. So, presenting to other people, presenting online, presenting to adults, getting students used to having that opportunity. In addition, we have computer science. So, in 2018, New Hampshire adopted a K-12 computer science, they have their standards. And by 2020, districts needed to have a program in place, whether teachers were going to do it or you were going to have a special. That was up to the district to decide how they were going to do that. Students K-5 are actually learning how to code, building algorithms, and problem solving and troubleshooting. So, today even as an example, I had first graders who had written their own algorithms for how to plant a seed and then were actually following their algorithm to plant the seeds to see if they could do it correctly. And then it slowly translates into, here's a computer, we're writing that same program to get the computer to do something. So, it does flow very nicely. Then we also have the implementation of the ISTI standards, which is really teaching digital citizenship as well as how to use Google tools and the tools of a computer to create, communicate, collaborate, and then seek feedback. So, that might be things like when I say seek feedback, like how do I use spell check? How do I use things that will improve my work when I am online? And finally, robotics is probably the student's favorite component of this. We take our computer science and our coding abilities and we imply, employ them towards using our robotics programs. So, from our kindergarten students who are using B-bots and small robots to our fourth and fifth graders who are using Spheros and Vex Robotics. There's all kinds of stuff that's always happening with the robots in our space. Finally, what's new this school year, so again, STEAM is twice a week. So, the way we broke it down was in, we broke the year into thirds, second and third grade in the fall, have STEAM twice a week. Fourth and fifth graders will have that in the winter. And then grades K through one will have double STEAM in the spring. Also, this year, for, I would like to start working on media literacy with our fifth graders. It's really important. We talked a lot about social emotional learning and where our kids found themselves last year. I think it's really important that fifth graders prepare, are prepared to go off into middle school where a lot of times they're given phones and there isn't a whole lot of information given to them about how to use that. So, it's like, how do you see yourself in social media? And we, we even started talking about it the other day and, and some girls brought things up and they're like, oh, Instagram is going to be for kids now. And I said, we, that's where we're going to talk about that. Because I said, there are filters that could make Mrs. Brown 30 years younger and a whole lot thinner, and that's not real. And so, I think it's important to start teaching our fifth graders about how do we look at that, where does this information come from? Because I think it's important for them to learn how to evaluate media and know what's real and what's not. And we're going to hopefully start working on that with fifth grade. Also, this year, which is very exciting, I have been pushing for this for four years, Mr. Andruski knows that. I will be reporting, so I will be part of the report card this year and you will see those competencies. So, we are working on, or the students will be, will be looking at how they work with collaboration, innovation, and engineering. So, we will be part of that. And that really, to me, was super important. And the reason for that is there are so many kids who can't wait to get their, their report card and to look at how their growth is happening and what's going on. And there are kids who reading and writing is, is hard for them. But man, put them in the STEAM lab and let them build something, let them think creatively and out of the box, but they weren't seeing their work on the report card. So, I'm really excited to see that portion there. And finally, project-based learning opportunities, getting more and more of those in there. Currently, we are doing a huge hamster habitat project where Mr. Q passed along an email to me from a, a, well, how can I say it? Yes, a Carrie's Pet Palace that we're not quite sure where that is. But they've asked us to help them design hamster habitats, so the students had to create things, they're building them, they're working in teams, and they will create presentations to then send back to Carrie and get feedback on the work and what they have provided him, so, or her. And then more of that will be happening throughout the year with all different grades. And this last one is in the works for the school year. It's really important that we are bringing in and connecting with community programs. So, UNH NOMATS is a program where they are sending bacteria up to space and they're looking at how it mutates, it adapts, and different things. And they are coming into schools and providing programs for free of charge. Where they come in, they meet with our students, they do certain programs, and then they leave us with a challenge. We work on it and then they come back and they give us feedback as we present. So, fourth and fifth, oh, that's, the NOMATS will be third graders. And then Excredia is going to be, four years ago, we paired up with Thermo Fisher Scientific and our third, fourth, and fifth graders were given a challenge to create a prototype to bring medicine to a cancer cell. And they worked on that and Mrs. Bustle was teaching them how to draw blueprints and Mrs. Ochsler in the library had them doing some research. And then they came back to me, that's where they were building, and then they come in here and have an hour to do the build. And we had actual engineers that were in here who scored them and they had to present in front of them. And this will be exactly the same type of program, just with a different kind of challenge. And so, Mrs. McCarthy over in Kensington and myself, we are going to be working on that together. So, lots of stuff that's exciting for this school year. And you can see, here's our algorithms at work actually this morning. So, if you have any questions, you can ask them now, you can also email me. I would love to extend an opportunity for any board member who would ever like to come into the lab to come and be a part of it. I promise you, I will put you to work and sit you at a table or in a group with a bunch of friends. And also, follow me on Instagram. Because throughout the year, I post pictures of what goes on, so I will send that all to an email so that you can just see what, what's happening in kindergarten or what's happening in first grade. And then for families, I will also get that to Mr. Q to put his more, so that families, it is a private Instagram, so only families. So, if you have a strange Instagram that I won't be able to tell your last name, you can just email me and say, this is who I am and you can follow what's going on in the lab. So, thank you very much. I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to talk about this great opportunity you have given our students.
Do any of the board members have any questions for Mrs. Brown?
I do. So, so partly, you answered my orig, so I brought this up a couple of months ago and, and just to be totally like transparent in why I brought it up, I just like, from a board perspective, right? We're funding different things all the time and I just like, want us to be following up on the things that we fund and making sure that they are where we wanted them to be or they're working the way. And so, so you answered some of my questions related to that. I guess like, one of the things that we talked about was, were there like methods? And so, I think that having them on the report cards is certainly like, from an individual perspective, provides that, which I love to see. But like, I guess, like, is it, do you think there are metric, like, like, like to me, my answer is, or my question is, like, like, at the end of this day, does it matter for our students? And as a parent, I know that. And like, one of my follow-up questions, I'll get to about that. But like, like, is it against the standards, like the, I'm sorry, the, I wrote them down, but like some of the standards that you've just mentioned or, like, is there like, like, how do we, how do we like measure that we're success? And is that, and it's not like to say we're not a success, but is there something more that you need? Like, like, would there be something more that you need or, or something, a different model that would work better for you? Or like if we knew we were not achieving what we wanted to, to achieve? Does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And so, I think a couple of, there's been a couple of questions in your question. The first one for me would be that, like quantitatively, I can't pull out my impact on next-gen science because it's also happening within the classroom. So, if we're looking at sci, any type of a science score, that would be hard to tease out what was me and what was there. As far as like ISTI, when you look at things like problem solving, collaboration, you're looking at, those, those are hard, right? Those are out of the box. It's, it's big picture, it's not high-stake assessment data. However, when you're thinking like what fits, what are our needs here at Swayze? That, it can change, right? What this program is providing can definitely change. When you look at Kensington, Kensington changed their model to be more supportive of science. Right now, they're currently, because they have one class per grade level, she actually, Sarah goes into the classroom, co-teaches with the teacher, and then they transition into the STEAM lab. So, that's become more of a science model. Where in Stratum, their model is more of a makerspace model because their teachers are doing more STEM. Exeter, every school is using this position a little bit differently. So, it's definitely what this community or what this board would want to make that if it was like, we want to tweak it this way, we want to change it this way. But I don't think there's, it's in the, actually like data that we could look at to say, other than, you know, how is my child performing or how do we feel?
So, do you, do you think that it's, the way it's currently working, that it's, like, wha, what would you change if you could change something?
I feel like I change it every year, I keep tweaking it. I think right now, I'm only two months in to double time with students. What I really like about that is I can go deeper. We can slow down. We have questions. We, we talk more about things. The kids are taking more time to reflect. And I think that's an important part. They're, they're making connections where before, you've got 45 minutes and you're going to forget what we did today by next week and then you're going to have to lay the groundwork again. So, that tweak has really been beneficial for my program. I cannot wait to see what that does to fourth and fifth graders just because to have them two days in a row is going to be really interesting for me. I don't know. I, we've talked a lot, Katie and I, oh, Mr. Q.
I'm sorry to interject. I think it is hard to measure and I hear what you're saying about some kind of quantitative data. I, I think the same could be true for the purpose of any of our specials or any course that you're taking, you know what I'm saying? I think Mrs. Brown outlined all those different aspects of the, of the portrait of a graduate that we're looking for. In this world, which is reliant on tech, where our students are growing up and moving into an age where online responsibility and citizenship is probably the downfall of a lot of kids that are having concerns. I mean, if you look at what our society is going through right now with, what you see online is what life should be like. I think this is, this is an aspect that is so important. We're also talking about the question of, did we get what we wanted out of the investment? I would say yes. Just like we need physical education for healthy bodies, healthy minds, just like we need art and music, not only for those kids that thrive or are interested in it, but for all of our students to have that well-rounded experiences in education. Same thing with our librarian and all the different courses that we provide. So, it is a challenge to provide that quantitative score or that, you know, how many kids are going to go into STEAM-related classes in the future? I think because it is such a part of our society, that, that was the need, that's why we went there. So, the things that are happening in there are reinvented every year, which is what's exciting. We look at what's happening. Mrs. Brown looks at her program and doesn't just pull it out of a box and says, this is what we do every year. What's new? What's getting the kids excited? That's the purpose. So, sorry, Mrs. Brown, I just wanted to interject a little bit.
So, so, and this is, so this is my second part of the question and it's not really a Swayze question as much as a district question, Chris? Is that, so, so this started my thought originally, just like looking at state testing and like sort of wondering how we were doing with our science and then how our kids are faring when they get to CMS with the, what you provide them. And then, so, so, I have now very little time, but what, three months of time, having seen my child perform at CMS and I'm still just have one snapshot. But what I am seeing is, is that for this stuff, that she was very well-prepared. And so, they go into these digital science and the digital literacy classes at CMS and she's very well-prepared. So, I didn't have that when I first asked this question. I mean, it's, once again, but, but it raises a bigger question though, right? Of if, like, every STEAM program across the district is totally different. And then they're all going into CMS and they have to learn the same stuff because they learned one thing at Swayze and something different at Exeter and something different at Stratum. So, like, they have to totally start from scratch and they're learning how to do Google Slides even though here at Swayze, they've been doing Google Slides since second grade. How do we make that better? And that is not a Swayze question, I fully understand, but like, it, it is a Swayze question too, right? Like, how does this, how do we support the bigger picture for our students? So, they're, they're not like going into CMS and being like, oh, we've already done this for three years.
So, it's a great question, Allison. So, this summer, all the STEAM teachers came together. And one thing that is common is their competencies that we use for reporting out and they're in control of that. But how they deliver that at their school is very individual and what is, you know, what they value in their schools. To couple that, you know, in the cooperative budget for next year, I believe there's a STEAM teacher, full-time teacher because of the importance on it. So, that was the area that we weren't, you know, having STEAM-specific content area. Till they get to high school and they have the option to, you know, branch out in the science and math world, but also have the opportunity to go to Seacoal School of Technology to get really pinpoint in that. So, that, that's now become the alignment. But the work that the STEAM teachers did this summer, we spent a, a whole day going through our competencies and what was important, what should we be teaching, what grade levels we should be teaching it. So, that is common and that's what we've been doing with all of our content areas because it is a very big animal, SAU 16, and each district does things differently. However, we have a common set of language and expectations that we'll follow because all of our kids go to one middle school and one high school.
Right.
So, we're really starting to tie that up and I'm feeling more and more confident with these questions we have with our curriculum coordinators, with our specialty teachers, that we are becoming more and more aligned K-12.
Because that like sort of answered, I mean, like I said, it was only my own snapshot, but it sort of answered what my original question was this summer, was like, how, are they, are they better prepared? Are they?
So, Anna answered the question.
Anna answered the question, but like from a school board perspective, you know, it would be, you know, like, I don't, I hear you, Ron. I, it's hard, it's hard to put, and I'm not looking for a number for it. It was just, that was where we originally started. But this was awesome. It's really nice to see the refresher about, right? Like, it's been a couple of years about where we started with all of this and it's cool to see all that. I mean, every parent in this town is, has to address these things, these life skills that.
Oh, absolutely. And we talk about that all the time, is, you know, when we're talking about digital citizenship and I'll tell the kids, like, this is, like, adults need this. I, I go on Facebook, I'm reading stuff. I said, I want to tell people, you know, this is what we, we need to be doing. So, it is, it's timely, it's important and it's teaching, you know, and it's kind of tying into all of those things. So, I greatly appreciate having the opportunity to talk about it, so. Come in, join me, Allison, anytime you want, I promise, it'll be fun.
Thank you.
It, it was wonderful, thank you.
It was wonderful.
May I ask you, could we get a copy as board members of your presentation? And would you be comfortable if we were to attach a copy of it to the minutes?
Absolutely.
Your presentation's just beautiful, that would be.
It is.
Thank you.
I've asked Mrs. Galloway, one moment, we're, uh, sorry. Mrs. Brown, can you queue up the video? And inside the closet, there is. It just, there's a knob inside the closet. It just, uh, there's a knob inside the closet that has to switch to HDMI. Thirty seconds, yeah, for sure. Actually, it'll take me 30 seconds to kind of frame the video that you're going to see. One of our Swayze goals and one of our SAU 16 goals is student agency, which is putting students at the forefront of learning. That schools are not just about teaching the main, the, the main purpose of a school is learning. So to do that, we want students to have such a big role in the work that goes on here because it's for them. They need to be a part of it. So we are studying and learning more about students leading their learning and also leading conferences to have conversations with their parents and their teacher about what is their learning, what they're thriving at, what their goals are. Now, Swayze teachers have been doing student-led goals meetings and student, uh, conferences for a while, but we want to, we want to go even deeper. In fact, we have invited all Swayze students to attend parent conferences last week and again this week. So at, at least we know that parents know that they can bring their child so their child is sitting at the table. Anything the teacher has to say to the parent and the parent has to say to the teacher, the child should be a part of that. And the conversation should be at a level where the child can understand what it is that they're talking about. So everybody is on the same page. How are we looking for the video, Mrs. Brown? Thumbs down. Yeah.
Is it working now?
No.
Do I have to go pop a spot and working on my computer?
Well...
Is it okay if students...
Of course. Of course. And I'll definitely share the video with all to see. And I, I have the fourth graders to thank for, uh, a few of our fourth graders were willing to talk a little bit about their goals conferences. So I had a video of students sharing their experience. Uh, and it's actually, it, it, it helps us understand what, what they like about it. It's also very cute to see them talking and, and being a part of, uh, what it is a real live initiative um, in a goal for us as a school. So, um, we're going to yield for, uh, Mrs. Gallo to talk a little bit and share her presentation. Maybe? Cause your presentation is, uh... And there goes Mrs. Brown.
I can introduce myself.
For sure.
Okay, so I'm Katie Gallo. I'm the curriculum coordinator here at Swayze. This is my third year. Um, so I started right before the pandemic and it's been a very interesting last two years and a bit, um, in this position. And I wanted to share with you, um, student data. So before we get any conversation about data, there's a few points I think that are important to make. Number one is data is incomplete. It never shares a, a child's story, who they are, where they come from, as well as all of the learning, for example, STEAM, that happened inside the classroom and outside. So that's always important. That is a snapshot. Data is neither good nor bad. We don't look at a student's data and say they're good, they're bad. We use the data, teachers and students and community members, uh, use the data to identify students' needs, to figure out where they are on their learning journey and to move them towards a, a goal. So it depends on what goal we're talking about, whether that be in di- uh, different disciplines. Additionally, it's important to recognize that the last year and a half have been anything but a traditional school year. So when these students took the diagnostics, which are the beginning of the year data, um, collection, that's after a year and a half of non-traditional schooling. We offered, as many of you know, two settings last year. One full in person in a non-traditional setting as well as fully remote for most of the year. So that's also important. And lastly, when we talk about equity, this is what we're talking about. We're talking about meeting students where they're at and moving them forward no matter where they are, who they are, and what is happening around them. So that's really, really important that this is what equity is about. We use data to figure out what each child needs. Okay, so I'm going to talk about math data, reading data. And most importantly is that last part is what's next? What do we do with this data and how do we use it? As any parent in this, uh, and I'm so sorry that is so small. So I will share that with you. I don't expect you to have a magnifying glass. Um, so I can share the numbers and then I'll definitely attach it and give it up to the board so that you can read these numbers a lot more clearly than you can see them. This is our math data. We use the I-Ready diagnostic. As you can see, the majority of our students are in that yellow category. The yellow category is where we expect students to be at this point. Um, students took this in September, so from the very beginning of the school year. That yellow means that those students have just left that past grade level, just started their current grade level, and they know everything up until their current grade level. So for example, if you were to have a grade two student in the yellow band, they know and were able to answer questions at the kindergarten level, the first grade level. With your benefit of question at the second grade level, those students were unable to answer this question. That's expected because they're in second grade and we haven't been able to teach them the second grade material. With that being said, those students in the green and the yellow makes up for about 90% of our student population. That means 90% of our students at Swayze made benchmarks. That's the criteria. I've never seen data like that. So then we focus our attention at the red and that is just as important as any other color. Those students need intervention, they need help. We want to make sure that we close those learning gaps and we figure out what they are. Luckily, the ready map gives us exactly what they need. We can figure that out easily and I'll explain later what we do with this data in the classroom. I think it's also important to look at last year's data. So this was after three-fourths of this school year was in-person normal to this whole year. With that little bit from March on, they went remote. This is comparable. Third, the distribution of yellow, red, and green are about the same. That tells me that last year, despite the challenges, despite the fact some of our students were remote, despite they were in a non-traditional setting in person, that our instruction was good. It tells us our students, our staff, and our teachers and our families are incredibly resilient, were able to learn despite the pandemic, which plays me here. So decided to take the students who were in-person last year, look at their diagnostic data from this year, take the students who were remote for the majority of the year and compare, and look at their diagnostic data from this fall. And you can see remarkably, there's very little difference. That's absolutely amazing. I think it's a really interesting thing to look at. If you want to say that, that doesn't include any students who enrolled since then. It doesn't include our fifth now, sixth graders, and, uh, obviously our kindergartners now. So that's in perfect data, but I think it's really interesting to see that the distribution is about the same. So I'll stop there. Do you have any questions about math?
I do. Not quite sure how to articulate the question though. When we're saying that many of the students fell in yellow and that's great, um, are we comparing them to how others did in the state or in the nation or...
Good question, really good question, no. So that yellow is, um, normed at the national level. Um, so with anyone who takes the I-Ready math diagnostic in the country.
But what's the national level? Like that could be you get 50 out of 100 correct, right? What, like where does the national level fall or how would we find that information?
I would have to ask Ready Map, or sorry, you curriculum associates. I don't, I don't have access to the national data.
I think what we do provide, and we did provide to all of our parents are percentiles, which kind of lets you know individually where students have fallen, uh, with this. And just like any other, any other measure, this yellow scale, you know, you're closer to the green, that means you're answering more of those, we talked about second grade. Let's just stay with second grade. You're answering more of those second grade questions than those that are closer to the red and yellow. Okay? Again, the point was that the yellow doesn't mean warning. It doesn't mean lookout or trouble or at risk. It means that we're on track. It does not mean, uh, we need to provide intervention right away. So, um, anyway, that's my, that's my...
But that's depending on what you compare it to.
I'm sorry?
It's depending upon what you compare it to.
Well, all the, and I believe the graph is not, it's, 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 those are the scores. So it's not like a percentile score. So if you wanted a national graph, we could probably provide that too. You know what I'm saying?
But I, I think that you're, I, I think you're misinterpreting, like, so yellow is not, you're not looking at a percentile. You're not comparing yellow against a national benchmark. You're comparing yellow to grade level appropriateness. So yellow is not, there's no comparison... Right, like...
Or expected, sorry, if that's the wrong...
Like red are students who are performing below a certain level, not compared to anybody, just compared to what I-Ready says is, is grade level appropriate, right?
Can I...
So what, so the, these are not the percentages like that we got. This is just...
I interpreted it as the yellow as compared to how those did nationally. So I am not interpreting it correctly.
My understanding, and I think this is what Mr. Q is saying, is that for some reason we're already use a second grader. So a new second grader would kind of be expected to land in the yellow because they don't know the second grade material yet because they just started second grade.
And some of our students, even if they were in second grade, were able to answer some second grade content, which tells us that for whatever reason, maybe they learned it in prior years, exposure, strength, who knows? They were able to answer something in their current grade level despite not having read top that content.
But then how, so how, we just had ratings come out where our school fell like 15 spots or something. Is that not reflective and is that something different than this?
State scores.
The state scores like, so what is that? That's not I-Ready and it's...
Well, I mean, that's, that's, that's a whole, that's a whole other...
SAS.
That's a whole other conversation too about rankings. And I'm sure everybody has different formulas for rankings. So, um, I, I think what I read today for one of the rankings was, you know, New Hampshire SAS, whether it's New Hampshire SAS for reading, math, science. Um, we've always taken, taken those state assessments. Uh, last three or four years, it's been in the spring. It always used to be in like the fall, which didn't make a lot of sense to us. So, um, and just like any other assessment, we don't really use it to rank. At least that's not the world we live in here. We use assessments to inform the direction we want to go in so we can individualize instruction for our students and prove upon what we're providing, to have a conversation with the student and with the parent about the work that we're doing. So, you know, it's, it's good to see the numbers, it's good to see the color, but at the end of the day, what are we doing with it? And I know that's part of your presentation too.
So the use of Star Reading and Math in early literacy is for grades one and some students, depending on, may also take it in grades two. Our kindergartners don't take, uh, start early literacy until the winter due to age appropriateness, which is inappropriate to have them take in the fall. So they'll take it in the winter and in the, uh, spring. So this is our first graders and a few of our second graders. You can see that the majority of our students are at or above benchmarks and those in intervention or on the block are students that we want to pay close attention to to figure out what their individual needs are and how to move them forward through whether it is in-class support or outside. And I'll talk again more about that in a moment, about what outside support looks like. So early literacy includes a lot of things. Uh, this is, uh, percent mastery. So this is not necessarily the proficiency. Mastery is a higher benchmark. Mastery is 80%. That comes from edu- uh, educational scientists who say that if a student gets to 80% mastery of any given concept, that they most likely have mastered that concept. So for example, I'll take the one we need to work on most, uh, that's 64 the paragraph. That's a comprehension of a paragraph. So that tells us that 64% of the students in grades one and those who have been in grades two will be able to answer a question about a paragraph, read a paragraph and answer a comprehension question about it. That tells us, it tells our teachers that that's where we need to focus on is the comprehension component of the A. Here is our data for grades two through five. Again, uh, most of our students in grades two were between either early literacy or reading. And you can see that it grows. 76% of our students in these grades are at or above benchmark and that yellow and the red is shrinking, which is what we want to see. That also tells us that our instruction in grade one are working because that blue is growing as they move through space. Star reading includes a lot. Uh, the ability to read and understand literature, the ability to read and understand informational text, the ability to read a difficult text, something that's above their, uh, societal level or their reading level, uh, and the ability to look at crafts and pictures and make sense of it. That's that integration of knowledge and ideas. So again, I'll give an example. You can see that the highest need is in craft and structure for informational text, that's 67%. That means 67% of the students in grades K, or sorry, two through five would be able to answer a question about craft and structure for informational texts. Again, that tells our teachers really want to focus their instruction. So some parents might have received ready reading a set of stuff. And that's because teachers were interested in seeing, since we use I-Ready map, diagnostic data, uh, they were interested in seeing what their ready reading would give us and if it's a richer point than the star. So we had three teachers highlighted that this year we have a lower level, a middle level, and a higher level because we know the needs of reading are very different depending on which grade level they're in. And we see that distribution. Again, we have a very low level of Z that tells us that our students at Swayze are at or above benchmark, which also mirrors the data for this dot. Do you have any questions about the data?
During public comment, you can, okay.
Yes.
So I have a question. When you jump to grades two to five...
Yeah.
The blue grows, but the mastery, there's like less of a percentage of students that have mastery of these topics. Is that because it's more complex topic?
Yes, yes. So when you're learning to read, um, not that it doesn't require higher level thinking, but in general, that's when you're learning how to read, you're talking about learning the alphabet, learning that sounds make, uh, letters make sounds, learning about digraphs and that certain letters together make a certain sound, building words. Um, so there's, it is a lower level thinking in the, in those areas. Not to say that it isn't hard to learn how to read, but it doesn't require as much of an academic load of our students. When they go to grades two through five, they're starting to learn, especially in the two, three range, are starting to read to learn, which requires a lot of more academic load in comprehension of what they're reading. So there's just less questions in the early literacy around, um, comprehension. You just see like they might read a paragraph and then they answer a question, whereas in a star reading... Whereas in a star reading, they're reading maybe a page of text and then making sense of it. Okay, okay, so what now, like I said, this is the most important part of what we do with this data. So we do a lot, we do a lot. So in the younger grades, we take this data and our teachers tend to make stations or centers. So you might hear your students talking about that. I'm going to give an example, I just saw a second grade classroom. I walked into the classroom and these are the things I saw. There was a poetry station where they were underlining verbs because they had learned what a verb was and were finding them in text. I saw a station where they were listening to reading because that's one way of increasing their fluency as a reader. And I saw another station where they were working with the teacher on the ground. They were reading a book, they were talking about the book, they were having conversations with one another. And I saw a paraprofessional working with a small group of students on handwriting. Upon further conversation, that paraprofessional told me that it was definitely a need, especially after remote learning, where we, it was harder to see and teach how to write. So that was an example of what a station would look like. That's how we meet individual students where they're at. Not all students go to every station, it depends on what they presented as needs. In math, we use centers as well in the lower grades. We also use the Ready Math Pathway. That's only meant to be used, you know, forty-five minutes tops a week, but those are individualized based on the diagnostics that they take. So it adjusts based on their ability and their, where they're at, oops, and moves them forward. In the upper grades, you see a lot of flipped classrooms. So that's the idea of splitting your class in half and taking the higher need group and meeting with them on the ground. And maybe they're doing some more scaffolding, maybe they're slowing down a bit, but they're still receiving on-grade level content. And then they'll switch with the students who are at their desk. Perhaps those students at their desk are doing practice. Perhaps they're doing their Ready Math Pathway. And then they join this teacher on the ground and they're maybe moving faster, maybe they're receiving challenge questions. We also see grade level grouping, which is super cool. So I'll give an example of fourth grade. Our fourth grade teachers are all sharing their, their kids this year in reading. So it's skill-based, we looked at data, we determined need, we made groups based on those strategies and skills that are needed. And those students are now meeting within a grade level. So those are just examples of what that looks like, individualized instruction inside the classroom and amongst grades. So the next part is tiered support. That's a super educational term for what am I talking about? So in our, every student receives tier one instruction, which is the core classroom instruction. And eighty, about eighty percent, that's, you know, give or take, of our students will be fine and that's what they're needed. If, whatever they get in the classroom is enough. About fifteen percent of students will need what I call double dipping. So they'll receive the in-class tier one instruction and then they'll receive extra support. For us in reading, that's outside of the classroom. It also is inside the classroom in math. And that tier three is the individual educational plans, which we call IEPs. Those are our students who are coded, who are already receiving an individualized instruction with our case managers. So that's around five percent, give or take. So our tier two reading intervention, we overhauled after COVID. And what we decided to do is to take our assessments and use them to the best of our abilities. We do the Fanta's and Pannell Benchmark in grades one through five. Kindergarten will do that in the, in the winter. And we looked at accuracy rate, we looked at words correct per minute, which is a fluency data point and comprehension of text. We also use the STAR assessments, which you saw in grades K through two. We use a phonics creator called the Dibble. And our homegrown assessment in kindergarten, the EFDI, which had more age-appropriate questions. So we use all of that data, sat as a team, decided who was in that yellow, that fifteen percent. Don't get that confused with the yellow with the Ready Math. This is a different yellow. We identified the fifteen percent in each grade level and we decided who was going to receive more targeted support for six weeks. In that six weeks, they meet with an, a tiered two support person, which is different from K two, and then there's one for three, five. And they receive, depends on the state. We did, we decide as a crew what makes sense for that group for six weeks. Parents who had students qualify were, were given information and communication about it. At the end of the six weeks, they'll, they'll, will find more data to see if they made progress. Of course, our goal is that that those students' needs in tier two are met and they move on and they don't need the tier two. That's always the goal. This is not a year-long thing, these are flexible and they change every six weeks and you'll always be notified by myself and Mr. Q whether or not your child has qualified. And it's always based in data. And lastly, we meet every single week in our professional learning communities or grade level teams. We sit down as a team and we always, always, always talk about students' needs. So this is also where we're constantly collecting anecdotal data or, you know, you know, we just get on the same page. Do you have any questions about tier? Yes.
Actually, sorry, I actually have a question about, you mentioned pathways a couple times?
Yeah.
What is that?
Yeah, big question, okay. So in our Ready Math program, they receive a pathway. It's a learning pathway that's individual to them. No child has the same pathway because it depended on how they answered the questions on the diagnostic. It is also adjustable. So it's, they might have just had a really bad test day. I had them ask this all the time, I hated test taking. So the teachers have the ability to say, you know what? I know they blew that, or, you know, they didn't do well on it, but what I'm seeing in class is this. And they can adjust based on what they see. Does that answer a question? Yes.
I'm sorry, go ahead. So you said it's limited to forty-five minutes a day?
No, 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 a week.
I, it's online.
Thank you.
It's like a game, it's for the kids, it's like a game, like.
Okay.
Yeah, they go through it, yep.
Okay, that's, I was missing the online portion. Nope, that's okay, that's the part where I was.
Is there something that we do for those that are identified as gifted and score much higher?
Yes, so, good question. So, and we have them, we saw the green and then even like that green with the, the dash, I don't know if you can see that. Yes, this, what we're doing with them, those are always in our professional learning community. Sorry, I was trying to use acronyms and I realized. In our teams, we talk about those students and we come up with, usually they're in the form of like a project-based learning opportunity. Perhaps it is, they're in their own group too. So I know, for example, the second grade classroom I was in, she said, you know what? I just feel like I said the group, the higher level group in reading, I don't know if I'm meeting their needs. So we talked about implementing book clubs and they're leading their book club. She facilitates the conversation, but they're in charge of assigning, how much reading each person's going to do, who's going to do what? Who is the discussion leader? Who is in charge? So, and she facilitates that, which is a lot different than the teacher sitting saying, asking all the questions and whatnot. So that's an example of how we, we look at those students and move them forward.
Does it always need to be a teacher that reaches out? Not everyone would necessarily reach out to you and say, I don't think I'm meeting the needs of those that are more advanced. Is there something in place to make sure that?
Yep, so in grade level meetings, which happen weekly, we talk about those students. And we talk about how are you meeting those, those students' needs? Whether that be in math, reading, science. So yes, there's not a pinpoint, but through those conversations, that's why we have those PLCs weekly, so that we can talk about all students. And when I say all students, I mean those students in green too, and the students in yellow and the students in red.
I think Swayze's done a good job through the years since I've been here. This is my tenth year, we can, we identify students that are truly kind of just, you know, leaps and bounds ahead of the curriculum for that grade level, that we have to provide something different. So whether that's a BLAX, an independent study, whether it's, I remember a third grader that we kind of worked with through the years. So, and typically the BLAX is, you know, for, appropriate for a very small population. Fourth and fifth grade can handle not only the core subject matter, apply it at deep, deep levels, but also do some independent study too. So one thing I always hear from our math teachers over at CMS and Lauren McGrath, who's the sixth grade assistant principal, is how well-prepared our Brentwood students are for that next ladder, you know? They, we only have them until fifth graded, then they move on. So the preparation is in place. So we, I, I think the, the, the real jux of the presentation is the process that we use to kind of find out where students are at. It's like taking a temperature. And, and then, and then have a plan in place for every single individual student. And then those weekly conversations, you know, when we have five contracted prep periods for our classroom teachers and now we have a sixth one, not in the contract, which is a PLC time, where we can have kind of directed conversations about the work that's going on, that Katie can be involved with all the grade levels to talk about data and talk about where students are at. Because that's, that's really important. So it's a big part of what we do each week.
I do want to say that last year proved a very, very, very difficult time to individualize instruction. This year, like I gave you examples of grade level sharing students. We couldn't do that last year. In this model, they're able to get what they need to move them forward if they're at or above benchmark. They're meeting with the teacher and focusing, maybe their learning progression is higher. Last year, it was really hard to do that in the model that, to keep everyone safe, all the protocols, as you know. So these, we, we're definitely back to it. And that's how we're meeting those needs, is distributing them based on the need and always talking about it in conversations through PLCs. Any other questions?
Ron? It's simply because Katie, I assume you probably want to go home, you have to be here early. If anybody asked something that wasn't specific to their students, would you all be comfortable with them asking Katie any questions? I know we had one and her answering them, I don't want to put her on the spot, but just she did such a nice presentation.
Members of the board?
You don't want to allow the public to ask.
Here's, I guess my, I guess my, you mean right here at the meeting?
Oh, yeah, Katie, yes, Katie, sorry, yeah.
Melissa, are you asking whether we can have the public ask questions of Katie right now?
Yeah, she's comfortable.
I just, I don't know if I want to start opening up public questions for people that bring in to have a specific presentation for the board. Because questions, here's the thing, because it can get off topic. And this is the presentation.
So you don't want her to answer?
It's unexpected. The public is here to, to listen and be a part of the conversation. We have a chance for public comment.
I know, I still want to change that culture a little bit, you know, and be more interactive. I, I know we've been doing it that way for years. Okay, thank you, Katie.
I have a very specific question about reading.
I'm sorry, I have to wait for public comment, I apologize. She, but you can also email her as well.
Yeah, and I can share that, if you can refer to the graph, if you tell it quickly.
It's the two graphs comparing the first and second graders.
Remo, and then first is this one?
The first and second graders, now she, she.
Oh, okay, I see what you're saying, okay. So when you email me, I'll just remember to refer to that.
Yeah, so I'm just trying to like figure out.
Kitchen, yeah.
But, so you, we have data for reading and for math.
Yes.
I think a part of the pandemic that was most difficult for students was not necessarily the academic concepts, but the everything else. Is there any way that we are like analyzing, how to analyze needs of students for like social emotional support?
Really good question. It's really hard to quantify the impact, everyone presents differently. I will say that Pippi Bagnelli, our guidance counselor, comes to our PLCs, are invited every fourth PLC of the month. So it's, and that is, it's not that they reserve all their questions until the, the last week of the month. First of all, Pippi is a wonderful, wonderful guidance counselor, always available. And so there are being those needs all the time. However, if we're talking about like grade level needs that we're seeing trends in the grade, Pippi's invited to those PLC conversations in the fourth week of the month, where we talk about a larger trend, we might be saying, mind you, there have been moments where they were asked, can we flip? You know, this seems a little bit more urgent, can we flip that? And we do. But it is a constantly part of our conversation.
So our, our classroom teachers engage in morning meetings with students. And part of, part of the curriculum is open circle, which have conversations, which are SEL related. Also in grades two and four, we do the DESSA, which is an eight-question screening that the teacher answers on every student in grades two and four. And based on those questions and how they're answered, it might prompt us to do like a more in-depth screening with individual students to find out more about social, emotional needs. We also are involved in behavior intervention teams throughout the SAU, elementary level as well. And this is to provide support for students with at-risk either behaviors, conversations, things that we're concerned about. So we have different levels and tiers of how we support the social, emotional needs of the students at the elementary level.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mrs. Brown, do you have any luck? Oh, really? Okay, it'll have to be turned way. Oh, that's a maybe. She goes in the hallway, gets a signal and comes back in. Is that how the internet works? I guess it does at my home, but I felt.
I will say the internet is not very good in here tonight. I don't know, like.
I wonder if she went right outside that door? Because she'd be outside, you know, but she'd be close.
I don't even know, I mean, we've not had this kind of issues in the gym before. We've had these kind of, thanks for the patience.
Just answer those quick, quick kitchen questions right away.
Sure.
Better, Melissa, if he answers the two questions from, about the kitchen from last meeting.
Oh, she's back.
Yeah.
So just. What's that?
Well, it's pretty loud. Yeah, that's fine. I'm going to, I'm going to send it and share it and I apologize to everybody in the room.
One of the questions that came up at the last board meeting, some questions about not only composting, but how we're presenting some of the fruit. I did have a conversation with Maureen, who is absolutely wonderful, and some very good news to share. We've hired kitchen assistant. Yes.
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 We're out of a job, Megan.
Yeah, we're really excited that Jessica Bedwell joined us, actually, this morning. So, so Maureen and I had a conversation, first about the apples that are individually wrapped. And I just asked her what the purpose was. She says, well, unlike a banana or an orange where students, you know, could touch, peel, it's not really going into their mouth. But the concern is just keeping the apples clean and free from other people's fingers because it is a choose which fruit you want to get. So that was the thought process behind it. So that was the thought process behind it. I did talk to her about composting and when I brought it up, her eye, you know, I'll be frank about the conversation and it, I think we do need to do some exploring, because I'm sure composting does happen at schools throughout the country. I need to learn more about it too. Her experience is if it's not done well, and then experience she's had in other schools where it wasn't done well, it brings pests. And she goes, and if it brings pests, and if it brings a rat, I'm out.
I asked her the same question, I got, I got the same.
And the other thing we talked about was whether we could have like a farmer or something come and grab things as far as like for feeding other animals. And that's also something that could happen, as long as it's done on a regular schedule and nothing's left to sit. So that was, that was the concern. So it doesn't mean we can't explore and look into it more, that's just where we're at right now.
So what is, are we planning to explore or not for this year? Or I don't know, what everybody wants?
I'd need more time to look into it for sure. Yeah, I'll look into it for sure.
Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And just a couple, a couple other things to share. I did want to talk a little about the parent conferences, inviting students this year to those conferences. And again, I'll share that, that Goals Conference video that the kids put together, which was great. Last Friday, just some quick Swayze updates. And I do send out information every week on Fridays and all of my newsletters are available on the website. So if you go to the front page of our school website, I'm at the bottom, you just click on principal newsletters and you'll see the collection of them every Friday, so you can kind of be up to date. Last Friday, we had our second outdoor shindig hosted by grade five, which was excellent. Last week was also our book fair, so big thanks to Mrs. Oxnard and Ms. Buzzwell for putting that together for us. Last Friday afternoon was also the PFT Trick or Trunk, which was very popular. So I loved walking around and seeing all the students and families out there in the back. Tomorrow, there is no school tomorrow because we have a teacher workshop day, lots of professional development going on in the building. Mrs. Mayo is running a tech seesaw drop-in with questions for our teachers, which is a very popular program that we use, not only for students to demonstrate their work, but to get students excited about showing their mastery of competencies in that app, which is a lot of fun and the parents get to see it too. Tomorrow, we're also talking about our report card competencies, ready math planning, science standards with Mrs. Brown. So there's a variety of things that we're going to be working on with our staff tomorrow. So very excited. I know the, the board and myself, we received some emails about our extremely rainy day dismissal. It's never my intent to put anybody, students or staff, in any kind of danger when it comes to the weather. So we're going to keep an eye, I mean, a sprinkling and a light rain, we should be prepared with raincoats and those types of things, but any kind of downpour, really extreme temperatures, hail and slush and all that stuff. We have an alternate plan that we'll be putting in place, so we'll go back to calling students as their parents arrive, but only for those rainy days. That way we can get students out. So we have a plan in place for anything really nasty. So I just want to let the board know that we've been working on that.
Twenty-three new students?
Yes.
In all, across all grades?
Yes, yeah.
Did they move in or did they return from doing?
So it was a change from the last day of school, like student, like all the students that we kind of expected to come back, and I'm not even talking kindergarten, we've had a few kindergarteners that have come in since the beginning of school, and I included those students. But yes, throughout the grades, twenty-three students that weren't with us last year in K through five. We had nine students that have left us since that we expected to be here too, so. But from the memories I've had in the fall, we've never had this many families move in through September and October.
There's a lot of new houses in Brentwood. So I mean, I wonder if, you know, not for nothing, but like talking about impact thesis, I mean, there's a lot of new, there's a lot of new houses being put up. I'm just curious as to how many of those are like, yeah, I mean, I don't know. It's not, it's not that necessarily you would have, I'm just curious as to like, you know, so yours, yeah. It's a lot.
Yes, I agree.
I had a couple of questions. One was the use of the outdoor space, how is that going?
Students are always encouraged to be outside with their staff. We're talking about the picnic tables. Yeah, big kudos to Mrs. Brown again for helping coordinate the, the water and weatherproofing of those tables with some parents and students. Grades, currently grades three, four and five use those for lunchtime. And I have made it very clear to all teachers that they are welcome to use those areas anytime they're not in use during the lunchtime, so.
But is it, I know they know they're welcome to, but, but are they utilizing them? Are we getting the kids outside as much as possible?
Absolutely. The students are out, if you, if you came to the campus and walked around or, you would see between nine o'clock and three o'clock, somebody is outside with their students. And we know we do it for snack time and, I mean, a lot of the materials that we use are on the inside. It doesn't mean that people don't come outside and explore and, yeah, I don't, I don't keep track of how many classes do and how many classes don't, but it's definitely encouraged.
Is it possible to make sure that they're all utilizing the outdoor area?
Is it possible to make sure that they're all using the picnic tables? Just to use the picnic tables, I would, I would say I can, I, I know, I know they are invited to do it, so I'm not going to mandate that everybody get kids outside.
How about mask breaks too? Are we, because I've received feedback that there are classrooms, some classrooms aren't receiving mask breaks at all. So those are the same thing with not all classrooms getting out to the picnic tables? And that's why I'm asking, because the picnic tables, we've been talking about since September, and I know you put it out there, don't misunderstand me, it's not you that's not utilizing it. But I'm just curious too, if, if mask breaks, if, you know, how is that determined?
I would have to get back to you about how often it's happening. I know that students, again, are outside for recess. I know that's when masks are optional for students and staff. Yeah, and it depends on what's going on in the day. It really does depend on the actions, but a lot of, if the weather's pleasant, they'll bring them outside for snack. There's a mask, there's always a mask break at snack time in the morning. If students take down their mask, take a breath, I mean, this has been the general thought, you take it down, take a quick break. It's not like, all right, everybody take a mask break. I think the expectation is if you take your mask down for a second, then you put it back down.
All right, so I misunderstood, because I knew they could take it down for snack, lunch, in recess, but I had just assumed that it would be like a class-wide mask break for three minutes or five minutes, every hour, hour and a half, or something like that. That was how in my mind I had interpreted it, but that's not correct.
Not to my knowledge, and it's not something that I've mandated or put out there.
Okay, but the kids can pull it down if they need to?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and the students are doing great. They really are. They do, they do a great job with it, so. And I haven't heard any feedback from parents concerned about mask breaks. I mean, I haven't, but.
Does anybody have any other questions for Mr. Q? All right, next is the financials.
Okay, so. I think, is it on now? I think it's on now. All right, so thank you for signing the manifest, I have those all in the folder. In your board pack was a current year financial. We did outline the changes from the prior month, so as expected, as we progress through the year, actuals will grow. So in several areas, we had increase in costs and then some areas decreased in costs. So I outlined that all in the board pack. Did anybody have any questions? Okay, great. And then also in the board pack is the proposed budget for fiscal year 23. Let Ron take it away with his narrative.
Thank you so much for narrative.
Thank you.
So helpful.
I was just saying, it's color coded, isn't it?
Budcom's going to love you.
So we just want to look at the pink sheet, which is, and I want to thank Molly so much and Michelle and Erica and Chris and the crew, that we've, we've, we've probably met six, seven, eight times to kind of review the budget. I think sometimes it's much easier to look at the bottom line and then we can definitely go through the changes. Obviously with the, the savings you're going to see with the bond payment being complete is a massive, massive change. So the bottom line of the budget is an ask of negative 6.27, or it's down 6.27% from this year's current budget. Without the bond payment, it's still a reduction and the ask is still a negative 0.76% ask compared to this year's budget. We can go individually by expense type, or we can kind of look at the line by line of reductions. I think a good place to start is to keep going back from the pink to all the different lines there. We are in a contract negotiation year, so you wouldn't see any change from last year yet. It would come in the form of a warrant article for the teacher contract. We did see some savings. We had several retirees last year. We did go out and hire the best teachers we could absolutely find that applied to work at Swayze. And several of them are in the first four years of their teaching career. Just really strong people and really have fit in really well, so. And Melissa, you've always complimented me on my hires, so.
You do, you do, excellent.
Well, there's some great people that we've, we've brought in and some great people that remain to work here too. I mean, so, but we've, you know, and obviously we're always looking at what's the, what's the best quality of person we can bring in here, but also be mindful of what, what we are spending, so we are able to accomplish those, those things, so. And that's the goal, year in and year out with our budget and our spending and our resources.
And Ron, can I just add, that is mainly the teachers that are in the negotiation year, but that also includes the contractual increases for the pay as, as well as the 3% increase for anybody not in a union.
Yeah, thank you.
So the only thing that is missing is the pay increase for teachers, does not get captured here, because it has to go to a warrant article.
That is correct.
And their benefits.
And their benefits. Well, their salaries are captured, just not the increase.
It's at the current year salaries.
Right, and their current year benefits.
Correct.
Why is it though, on page one on the proposed budget, we have a budget change of $129,000 with, for the salaries of the teachers?
That's because it's a change in personnel with people replacing the retirees.
But this is in the proposed budget.
It's a change from current year.
Okay, so.
Are you asking about the numbers?
Just walk, yeah, just sorry, just walk me through it.
We budgeted for a certain employee last year before we knew who we were going to hire. So this is, you know, we, I think we had to make sure we budgeted for family, family plan or a certain degree.
This is just, she's just talking about the salary.
Salary line, okay.
It's a difference in the personnel. So last year when we did the budget, we had budgeted for the current teachers that are there and now Ron has different teachers at a different salary amount.
All right.
Remember, Melissa, we did have all the retirees who were setting the budget last year, there was some retirees that came in late, so we had to make sure that their salary didn't.
I do remember, it just threw me for a loop, because it was the same, very similar to what was currently, the current line, so I understand, okay.
As of right now, I don't anticipate any professional staff retiring. I haven't heard, I put, I put some messages out to see if anybody had indicated, so.
Could we just ask them not to?
Of course, we can always ask them not to. I'm not saying, hey, everybody, let's resign, let's retire. So, so obvious with that, no anticipated mentor salaries in that line. We do have increased funding for aides, one part-time aide moved from Title I funding to the budget this year. We have five general ed paraprofessionals there. Three are in kindergarten and two provide those interventions that Katie was talking about just a minute ago. The other paraprofessionals are under the special education line.
Can I ask a question about that? So like back three or so years ago, when we had like the, the math integrator, I'm sorry, I don't know what the official word was, but the.
She was definitely, she was a paraprofessional that we did move into math support.
Math support? And it was a general ed paraprofessional?
Yes.
And so why don't we have that anymore?
Why don't we have what?
The math specialist.
We, so we're going back three or four years, because I remember the person that was in that position. I remember that person leaving. And then, then the next person we designated took over as a classroom teacher. So, you know, we have these strong people that are hired in paraprofessional roles with a lot of skill and then they're promoted or in the first case, they left. And then I remember we transitioned to like a math win time and tried to designate someone coming in as a paraprofessional to support that role. So I think it was a combination of all those things and the person we brought in for that, she wound up leaving. We went out during the pandemic, I mean, a lot of those things attributed to that. And then as personnel started coming in, we put our focus in other places. Last year, we utilized every last paraprofessional, some of them for cohort classroom, like teaching support roles, which were, so we didn't have that, that, that space and time and capacity for it last year. So it's definitely something I want to consider. It's not something I have put in the budget, because right now the paraprofessionals that we're asking for each have a very specific role and they're all tied to, if they're special education, they're tied to supporting what's in the IEP for those kids. Our two literacy intervention people that are the general ed paraprofessionals. I think literacy has to come first and here, here's why. It doesn't mean math is taking a backseat, I'm just saying. That's what, that's where we see the need is. Our, our math program, it's numbers, it's symbols, it's all those things that we remember about math, but how we approach it is language-based. We have conversations with students about concepts. So we talk to them, they talk to each other about what it is that they're doing, so it's really text-heavy. So that, that support for literacy is important, not only for reading books, but also for understanding and discussing mathematics. So doesn't mean it's out of the question, it just, it would mean another, it would mean another hire, because right now what I have in place is what I need. It doesn't mean that doesn't change. Somebody could move in one day and roles change and I might be asking for more support, so.
I just feel like it was like one of those roles that helped us with the differentiation of, right, like the various levels. I don't know, I just. It had such positive feedback, I feel like, from so many people that as a board, I would be supportive of that, of funding that personally.
Absolutely.
I have a question. You said you don't anticipate needing any mentors, so why are we holding that line open with the amount that's there? Unless I'm not understanding what you said. Unless I'm not understanding what you said.
Uh, I'm wondering if that's a just-in-case?
Well, it went from $6,200 to the $4,400, we dropped it by $2,200, so we still have the good impact on it.
Yes.
Okay.
But this is, she's asking for next year.
Great, but so we have a level of $4,400 in there?
Right. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I, this is my first budget, so I'm gonna ask a lot of questions.
I think by contract, we provide someone for every, every teacher that's part of the collective bargaining agreement for at least one year, but if we need it for a second year.
Okay.
The funds are there.
Okay.
And I guess we're looking for big changes.
That, I have to say, though, that's something that will come up at Budget Committee. If we don't have retirements, why do we have that number there?
But how can we possibly guarantee we're not gonna have a retirement? I mean, last year, we budgeted for three retirements and got six. I mean, we would definitely want to hold, I mean, in case somebody retires, we want to make sure we have the funding available for it.
We have a very large unreserved fund balance right now.
Right, but we return that at the end of the year. We budget for what we think we need.
Well, but if, but if things come up, I mean, part of it is for what we're gonna return, but part of it is just for things that come up, right?
Right, but our unreserved fund balance is, is more unanticipated revenue than it is over-budgeting.
Oh, I'm not saying.
So we don't want to under-budget ourselves, because it's unanticipated revenue, right? I mean, no, yes?
I don't know. I mean.
No, it is. It's our unreserved fund balance ends up so large, because it's unanticipated revenue, not because we, we miss budget.
But if there's $7,500 for the mentors, they dropped it to 44, maybe could consider dropping it to 2,200. Is 2,200 per mentor? Yeah.
Can we just go through all of it, since we're not voting on it right now, so we can see the big picture, too?
Do you want to go line by line?
No, well, I don't really necessarily want to go line by line, but I just don't want to get hung up on one particular thing, like, we're not voting on it right now.
Right, and in my narrative, you'll see, I tried to put whether it's increased funding, decreased funding, a level funding for each of the lines. For example, increased funding for provision for parent retirement is in there. All the others for general ed, level funding. Go to special education. The large increase there is us moving our pre-K teacher into the general budget, instead of being funded through a variety of measures. One of them is the IDEA grant, which is a federal grant. Also, we asked the board last year if we could pre-buy some materials, which we did, so those funds are in there to support that this year. So that's the increase for the salary of the special education teacher, so it's one full-time pre-K teacher, and three full-time case manager of special education teachers. Seventeen paraprofessionals, there's a due case in funding due to the new hires that we did.
So we would still try to get the grants for the, for the pre-K teacher. It's just that we're funding her through the budget, and still try to recuperate.
Right. So, at the federal level, and at the state level, the funding for the IDEA grant has changed. Before, we used to get a sum of money for the SAU and be able to disperse it to our schools based on needs. Now you have a specific amount that is allocated from the state for each town. So, if we had a student move in, and we didn't have a specialized trust, or we didn't have the sufficient numbers in our budget, we could ask the IDEA to pay for that. The new funding formula that we have to follow this year, we only get a set amount based on student population in the world, so we're earmarked to a certain amount, I believe 50,000 is what we're earmarked at Brentwood, so we cannot go over that. So, we had to make some judgments on what we could use IDEA-based for that 50,000 for Brentwood. A year past, we were able to deviate some budgets by having extra money through the SAU that we could help support it. So, our hands are tied with how we now fund through the IDEA grant.
And since we have Kensington students, and can we use some of the funds earmarked for?
So remember Kensington, we pay for it out of our budget, because it's a Brentwood employee. Then we bill Kensington for the portion of that 40% for her salary and benefits.
Assuming our budget.
Yeah, so you won't see the revenue side of it, it's only in our budget, so that is a revenue that comes into us, much like Allison was talking about, the revenue sources that we have to offset our budget.
We have, we see increased funding for ESY, Extended School Year, which is the summer program. I see level funding for tuition, books, general supplies. Yeah, the rest of special education should be level-funded. ESL services, English as a Second Language, decrease funding based on actuals on the hire that we did this year. We have someone who works in the building about five hours a week. Co-curricular salaries, level funding, level funding for guidance supplies, level funding for health supplies, COVID-19 supplies. The next decrease based on actuals was what we budgeted for a 1.4 speech, so that's based on actuals. Level funding for speech supplies. You see.
So it's dropping from 1.4, or the 1.4 is the drop?
It's staying 1.4, but the salary is less than anticipated.
Okay.
PT Services is going to be funded through the IDEA grant, that's why you don't see any dollar amounts there. Currently, we have someone working a half-day a week to support physical therapy needs of special education students. OT is level funding for supplies. Professional Services, Regular Instructional, this is conferences and courses for our teachers that are not special education, that's an increase due to actuals. There's a contractor expense per the BTA contract. Placeholder for Curriculum Salary is in there. It's just what we've always done for those that aren't covered under any kind of collective bargaining agreement, myself included, and the administrative assistants in the office. Special Education, again, these are conferences and courses, that's an increased funding due to actuals. These are courses and classes that our teachers, I mean, it's, it's a great investment in our teachers, you know, we hired younger people, and our younger people are full of zest and ready to learn, and that's what they do. So this is, this is what we get. Some people are very interested in professional development and coursework. We're on to the library, media services. A decrease in funding, repairs and maintenance media is actually subscriptions, and I believe we are funding the media and library software licenses through our tech budget, so I just looked at actuals. Level funding for supplies and printed media for library. Under Computer Services, increased funding through our subscriptions due to actuals, and I did attach on the very back a list of everything that has to do with technology and computer support that's on your purple sheet. So it's a detailed list of not only general supplies for the computer, new computers and replacement. Pretty much, a lot of the new computers are really replacement, so that's why you see a reduction in new, it's kind of like something we haven't had before. So, the replacement is level-funded. You, we do have to support our Arrow Hive, which is our Wi-Fi. We should probably provide them less because of tonight, but usually it works pretty killer, so. And then you can see the list of subscriptions compared to last year's subscriptions. One of the big changes is our switch from Power School to Alma, which is our new student information system.
Where's the decrease? Where does Power School get listed?
I believe Power School is going, and I don't have money in the budget.
Oh, I see it up here, I see it, okay.
Office of the Superintendent, it's Brentwood's portion of the SAU budget. The Office of the Principal, again, these are placeholders. Increased funding for salary for our principal and the secretaries, administrative assistants. The 6.7% in, I keep, this is what I lose sleep over, Molly, because it's 27 paychecks, so you can go ahead and hit it.
About every four years, so, everybody's pay is based off of 26 paychecks, so for our hourly folks, it's like every four or five years, there's 27 pay periods in a year, not 26. So, this upcoming year is one of those years, so it has a 27th pay period.
It's like a leap year.
Yeah.
I'm glad you're keeping an eye out for that stuff. I don't even know how you do it. Increased funding for telephone, voice communication in the building is a necessary phone project. For Swayze, we did replace the phones about four or five years ago. It's not so much about the phones themselves, it's more the core of the communication hub for those phones needs to be upgraded, and I believe that's happening throughout the SAU.
Yeah, it's a big project that Richard Pratt is working on, I'm sure you've heard it, it's part of the Cooperative Budget, it's also in Exeter, and over here in Brentwood, and a few other schools, and so, he actually brought it to the co-op board last year, but they wanted to see it in the budget, so this is us putting it in the budget per that request.
We are one of two towns that wouldn't have to replace their actual phones, so I'm feeling good about that. And also, the rest is for phone and internet. I see level funding through the rest of this, this area, line. Operation of Plan, I don't have a narrative for all the specifics.
I will talk a little bit about the utilities. Now, Russi, he's not here anymore, is he? But he is locked into a lot of those rates for the upcoming year, so those are based off of rates that Russi has achieved. And then I'll talk to the student transportation, if you want, Ron. So, for first student, that used to be a 4.5% year-over-year increase, that is negotiated down to a 2.85% increase this year. And then any other delta would be based off of special education needs in the transportation line. And then, the benefits, we have a GMR, which is Guaranteed Maximum Rate, at 6.2% for health, and negative 1.5% for dental. And then, lastly, your bond payment goes away.
And do we feel good about whatever we have put aside for food services?
We have it flat-funded with the current year, I believe, and we felt good about it when we looked at the numbers. And also, just to note, Ron did win the award for lowest percentage.
But the lowest percentage is not reflective of a teacher increase.
That's correct, but almost.
So if we were in a contract year, that, I'm not taking anything away from you, don't, please, but if we were in a teacher, if we were in the middle of the teacher contract, that 3% would have been baked in automat, or whatever it was, it gets baked in automatically.
It will be part of future contracts in the years that you're not negotiating, but he still won without that.
Thank you.
Could you give me a refresher, just on page four, I'm forgetting? Our legal services 2021, the actual is $15,858.20.
It's at page four.
Yeah.
It's just like page 25 of this packet.
Oh, but it says page four on the.
No, I know, I know. It depends on which number she's looking at.
Oh.
My glasses falling off my nose.
FY '23 proposed budget, it's on, it's two-thirds of the way down.
Yeah, there was a couple cases, Melissa, that we had to have litigated based on complaints.
So that $15,000 that we're paying this year is for the, for those cases?
Correct.
So the taxpayers pay that $15,000?
That was all towards legal fees, nothing in court, but also, that was last year.
That was last year.
Right.
And the school board expenses at the $28,000? Who is that? She's not ringing a bell.
School board expenses, $28,000? I missed that paycheck. No, I see it here.
I'll leave that up if you guys want to.
Where is the, the School Board Association?
That would be under the school board expense.
So we want to talk about maintenance for this, right? I mean, is that part of the present, for next year's budget? I mean, we want to make sure that any of the projects that we want, that we talked about earlier, are incorporated into here?
Yeah, 10 grand, though, right? Is that to cover them? Is there an increase in 10 grand on that line?
We increased it next year by only $2,000 to incorporate through the projects that we know we need to do.
Oh, I was looking at projects. Isn't the 21, 22 budget 45, though, and then 22, 23 55? And it says budget change 10,000, up 22%.
Under projects.
Projects.
The 55, color.
Your recommendations?
Your recommendations for 2023.
Correct.
All right, that was my only question.
But then we talked about.
The paving.
Paving as a warrant article, or not?
I have too much paper from tonight, I actually.
For that school board expense, my internet's not working, so I'm having a hard time pulling it up, so I can send that to you guys after.
So does the 55,000? Sorry, I'm doing the math in my head, but I'm not doing it fast enough. So the things that are slated here for '23, 2023, are what we budgeted for?
No, it's the next, no, it's the next year after that. No, it's the next, no, it's the next year after that.
No, it should be 2023.
Because 22 is next year.
No, some are, what are we budgeting? Can you tell me which of these things got put in the 55,000?
Yep.
I think it's 22, because doesn't our year end in June?
Yeah, right.
So the art room, $2,000? The heat AC rooftop, $20,000? And then the AC units? Excuse me. We, I had the ERV controls in there for 2022 unless the grant takes that over. So your 55 are your ERV controls, which is 32.5, your rooftop, which is 20, and then the $2,000 for the art room.
Would the grant cover the whole amount?
You have to pay 20%.
Maybe 20.
So we could maybe do one of the extra, other, other AC units then?
We possibly could move one up? Yep.
I need different colored pens.
Need one of those pens that has all the colors.
Yeah, I know, the little four.
Great, does anybody else have any questions on the proposed budget?
Are we gonna get a chance to, like, we don't have to do anything tonight, right? This is just our first discussion.
Well, what we'll do, though, is, the goal is to vote on it our next meeting, because then we present it to BudCon within a week or two.
So if I look at it again and have questions, then that's okay?
Totally, yeah.
But oftentimes, tonight, we give direction.
Okay.
My only direction, for me personally, would be the mentor line. Because it, and I say that because it says even here on the description, when I have to go present it, it says right here, mentor salaries, and it's in bold, no anticipated mentors necessary. So I just have a feeling I'm gonna get questioned.
I hope there's not a point, it's not only replacing retirees. So if anybody leaves and we have a new teacher, they need a mentor, correct? So it's not-
Yeah, it's rare.
Yeah, just in case.
So maybe we can compromise and cut it to 22?
I would.
I have a question. So I'm just looking at this on the purple sheet.
Yeah.
It says your projected enrollment is 278. Does that take into account all these new kids that are just coming up out of nowhere that keep enrolling?
I'll tell you, I'll tell you how I came to this. So for kindergarten, for projected enrollment is the average of the last six or seven years of kindergarten. That's how we get that 45. And then for the rest of them, I added two students coming in to that grade level for grades one, two, three, four, and five. So this year's kindergarten's at 42, I predict they're 44. So I just at least budgets for two students in grades one through five, so.
I mean, we're losing a big class, we're losing our biggest class. The fifth grade has kept our numbers up for a while.
I just know, and again, I'm thinking about, if you're presenting this, they always say the population of students is going down. But then again, like, literally, like you said, there's 23 new students in the last two months or whatever, so.
Yep.
Thank you for explaining how you got those numbers.
You're welcome.
Hi, any more questions?
Do we want to talk, like, what do you want to do about the paving? Like, if it needs to go into, something needs to go into this budget, does it need to go?
I was, I figured we'd think on it, and if we wanted to do a warrant article.
Okay, so not, not put it in, anything into the budget, but do a warrant article? Or I like the idea of just doing it in parts?
Yeah, I mean, that's-
I think so, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Another consideration is the rec is probably gonna be, to be paid to, there will likely be a warrant article for that, I imagine. Though, there's a possibility of competing warrant articles, or two paving warrant articles in the same year back to back.
Our meetings first.
I know, I'm just throwing that out there as a consideration.
It's a really unglamorous way to spend money.
It is, but we need it. Our parking lot's been a mess for years.
But I mean, if we could do part of it with our maintenance fund and, or our, not our, you know.
I say we ask, all we can do is ask, and if we- All right. Have a good night.
Run away.
Bye, Molly.
Thank you. Do we have any board member queries? Has anybody been reached out to? Nothing? Nothing, okay. Everything we've already-
Oh, wait, all right, go ahead.
And maybe this is not typically how it's done, or maybe this is typically how it's done. In the fall, when we have a lot of stuff going on, do we ever meet more than once a month? Or is it always just once a month?
We do once a month.
If we did, well, if we needed it, we'd met for the budget.
Yeah, we have met before the budget hearing, or before the budget, not the hearing.
Okay. I, I, and I am new at this, so maybe other people, like, after about hour three, I just feel like I'm getting a little less sharp. So I don't know if it's possible to split some of this in two meetings, or if it just turns into two, three-hour meetings?
Or we could be more efficient.
Okay.
Not, that wasn't a dig, I'm being, it's a dig at me too, don't worry. I think we're all with you on that one, but I don't know that the board wants to entertain more meetings at this point.
I don't necessarily know what I want to eat, I'm just asking.
Yeah.
Because I'm here.
Oh, it's always-
Just bring more chocolate next time, and you'll be sharp as you need to be.
More caffeine, gotcha.
It's always an option, but I agree with you. And it seems that the most important stuff we save till last, always when we're very tired. I would agree with you. So, okay, so, under the board member queries, as far as I can tell, we've touched on all of it. We touched on, the board selectman reached out to us. Ms. Leo reached out to us about the playground, the grant opportunity that was brought to our attention, so we have- Sorry?
We got emails from parents about the rain the other day.
And the rain, right, yes, and, thank you. Yeah, and we covered the rain, okay.
Just on that, is there any, like, can we make an auto reply that just says?
Oh, yeah, we gotta look into that.
Is that, that's like allowed?
So I have been doing that.
You can individually, with your own account.
I've just been saying, you know, thank you for taking the time to reach out to us. It's our policy that the chair will respond for us if that doesn't happen for some reason within, I think I said, like, a week or two.
Thank you for doing that.
Will you respond for?
Okay, and then, so I think we nailed correspondence too. And then next is the COVID Communication Committee. So just in summary, I want to say we've met three times, right, already, Chris, three times? It's every Wednesday, 8:30 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. I'm gonna give my synopsis, and if I miss anything, you wanna just jump right in?
Sure.
So it's, it was meant to be 30 stakeholders, I think we're at 31 stakeholders at this point, right? It includes a superintendent, assistant superintendents, it has school nurses, a couple of parents, principals. So I think at this point, what we're really trying to figure out is the fact that maybe three or four weeks ago, we had an issue where we had let the parents know masks optional for a day, and come to find out the numbers were incorrect, number one, out there on the COVID database for the state. So we just want to be careful that we have correct information when we're changing from mask to mask optional, number one. And then number two, the best way to communicate to parents, number one, so that they get the information, so we want to convey it to them in enough different ways, whether it be telephone, text, email, et cetera. Make sure that they get the message, but also, we want to do it in a, we want to do it where they have enough time to make alternate plans if they're not comfortable, or they want to talk to their children about they would prefer their children wear a mask. But we're trying to balance it with those who are very excited to see the mask optional at this point in time. So we, I think we've come very close to a plan, and we're talking about actually solidifying something this coming Wednesday. And that is where we're at. I don't have more detail because we haven't solidified the plan yet, so I don't want to speak prematurely, to be perfectly honest with you. Do you have anything else to add to it?
It was a great synopsis, thank you, good job.
All right, and then next is policy review, and that is academic freedom. Is that, did you have a policy committee meeting, Brian, or is this, is this you first? Brian?
I did not, I was not able to make the last policy committee meeting, so I don't know a lot about the genesis of this. There was a email that came out on Saturday, it looks like, introducing this policy.
So I'm assuming this is related to House Bill 2, right? The budget from the state, or what was HB 544? Right? And actually, I'm just gonna, are you all right with me just reading it? Because it's a hot topic. Okay, so the H, House Bill 544 was about the divisive concepts. This would be a school board policy IB, academic freedom. Academic freedom is the opportunity for educators and students to study, investigate, present, interpret, and discuss facts and ideas relevant to the curriculum and course being taught, giving consideration to the maturity level of the students. Educators should be accurate, exercise appropriate judgment, and show respect for the opinions of others. In no event may an educator instruct, advocate, or train that one identified group, a group based upon age, sex, gender, identity, sexual orientation, race, creed, color, marital status, familial status, mental or physical disability, religion, or national origin is, one, inherently superior or inferior to people of another identified group; two, inherently racist, sexist, or oppressive, whether consciously or unconsciously; three, should be discriminated against or receive adverse treatment; four, should not treat members of other identified groups equally. Nothing in this policy should be construed to prohibit the teaching of historical subjects, including, for instance, discrimination, discussions related to current events, or efforts to promote equity and/or inclusion. And the law reference was RSA 193.4. Do we have discussion on it? Do we want to, do, do we have changes? Do we want to move forward with it? Do you want to table it?
I guess for me, I am having a hard time figuring out how to balance that number four, should not treat members of other identified groups. Treat everyone equally is what number four says. And then Roman numeral three says, efforts to promote equity and/or inclusion are not included. And so, how do we know where that line is?
Where did the policy come from?
Policy came from, because it's a law, so there was a policy related to that, and it was recommended from New Hampshire School Boards Association.
Okay. I was just asked, just so that-
Yeah, no, I, I mean, it obviously is-
But it's not efforts to promote equity and inclusion. It should not be construed as prohibiting.
I understand, so, so what I'm saying is, how do you balance that teachers are not teaching to treat, hold on. Educators should not instruct, advocate, or train that one, I want to make sure that we're having a good balance, because this says that teachers can't teach these four things. Or do these four things, right? So where is the line between not treating members of different groups inequally and promoting equity?
I'm not following you, I'm sorry.
So isn't the point of equity to maybe sometimes treat groups differently? Like, somebody with a disability needs to be treated differently than somebody who doesn't have that disability? I just feel like it's a little contradictory, and I guess, are we allowed to change the wording of this?
Not if it's law.
Okay.
So the wording in here is based on the law. So bullet point, or numbers 1, 2, 3, 4 are the law.
Okay.
So my thinking is, this is the law, right? Whether we adopt this policy or not, the law is the law. I don't think this policy is necessary because of the law. I also find the title a little icky.
I would, I would agree, honestly.
It's a bit of Orwellian Newspeak. So.
It's titled academic freedom, I don't know if you guys know.
I can, I mean, I'd say right now, I'm not going to vote to approve this policy.
No, I'm gonna go with the lawyer.
My, my question was just simply, was it a, I just want to make sure there aren't any typos.
Well, there are, because after is colon, then they go inherently superior, inherently racist, and then they use verbs again on three and four.
Oh my god, can you kind of grade my papers? I love your grammatical.
So there should be a colon after the parentheses, and then is inherently, or superior, is inherently racist.
I'm still stuck on the word judgment with the E.
If we're not gonna approve it, though, can we not?
But how can you not approve it?
Because you don't need the policy, because it's a law, so if you don't follow that, you're-
If we haven't adopted the policy, the law is the law, and we're subject to the law regardless of whether or not we adopt the policy.
So it would be, like, it's just illegal, whether or not we have a policy?
Okay, so why is the New Hampshire School Board Association recommending that we have a policy?
I don't know, I'm not part of all the policy committee meetings, so I don't know how it was brought and why it was brought to that meeting. So I could go back and ask both Ms. Mary and Dr. Ryan, but I'm not at those meetings, so I can't answer that tonight.
Table it until we have more information?
Yeah.
The only thing I would like to add is, the Swayze staff are aware and understand all provisions of HB 2.
Oh, Superintendent Evaluation Committee. You can't volunteer, you're already on it.
Well, last year I was on it and off it, and on it and off it.
Yeah, you're on it.
Okay.
But there's a meeting coming up in a few days, within the week, so I need to stop you.
Well, I have to be told, though.
I'm sorry, they just said it, within the past few days. If you need me to go to the first one, I can, but I'd rather you go.
Okay, well, can I get on the list?
Yeah. I did, yeah, I did let them know that someone new would be taking over. Okay. Public comment, do we have any public comments? Oh my goodness, actually, we need to backtrack for a minute, I'm sorry. I messed up. Crystal, are you here representing the BTA for the policy on academic freedom?
I am.
I'm sorry. Do you want to go to the mic and give us feedback? I'm so sorry, I meant to, I-
You all have tabled the motion, am I correct in that?
We've tabled it, but we're gonna discuss it and then, again, next month. So if you have feedback, if you're comfortable sharing it.
The language comes from HB 2, and we have no problems with that. The questions raised were about the maturity level of the student. Who determines that for the child? Who decides if the teacher didn't take that into account? Those are our thoughts.
Do you mind forwarding that to me?
I can.
Perfect, thank you, and then I'll share it with the board for consideration. Okay. Sure.
On the HB 2, I just want to make sure that kids with IEPs are taken into account with that because of the equity and kids with IEPs have to be able to access the material at a different manner than-
They just don't want them teaching critical race theory. They just don't want them teaching critical race theory.
And equity and, and equity and equality are two totally separate things. Equity means that people who have different needs gift them.
What I heard was Reddit, I just wanna make sure that this isn't going to infringe on children with IEPs and their academic needs, if you can understand where I was going with that.
Thank you.
Sorry, I'm Susan Benton, and I've been a resident of Brentwood for twenty-one years. Simple questions, probably for the principal, how long is the lunch period for kindergarten?
It's twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes, has that been shortened because of social distancing?
No.
Okay, and is that generally indoors or outdoors?
It's indoors.
Indoors, okay. Then my second question, I think that you probably can answer, Katie's not here, but with those iReady tests analysis that we were seeing, how long has that test been given here at Brentwood?
Sure, iReady is our math diagnostic.
Yeah.
And then we started it last year for those teachers that were piloting it, so it was about twelve of our teachers. This year, all of our grade levels and all of our students are taking the iReady math diagnostic. There used to be the STAR assessment, we still, we still do the STAR assessment for reading.
Okay, cause I was wondering if we were seeing trends down, I, I, we did see the trends last year to this year. What about your reading tests that were up there? Are those new tests too?
No, those are the same, the STAR reading.
And how are those trending?
I'm sorry?
How are those trending, the results, the analysis?
You mean longitudinal, you mean from year to year?
Yeah.
I haven't looked at that, I'm just looking at this year's classroom students, so.
You haven't looked at how it's-
Like, from year to year?
Yeah.
I follow students when I look at data, my, my specific focus has really been on individual kids and how they're trending, so that's been my main focus.
Okay, but we, but we did-
Different population, so.
But we did see results of how Brentwood was comparing to the benchmarks.
Yeah.
And that's what I was wondering, you know, other bench.
I haven't, I haven't seen the huge shifts from year to year. I mean, we're usually in the seventy, seventy to eighty percent proficient across the board, regardless of whether it's a local assessment or a state assessment.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Any further public comments? Alright.
Actually, I'm to Melissa, when will you be able to report, I guess, where the parents will get an email about the COVID community's planning?
So- Oh, actually, it's, right, it's in two more days, so I don't wanna, I don't wanna promise, but I think the goal, right, would be Thursday or Friday, that they'll have something hopefully to give to you. That's just sharing with you the plan, but yeah. You're welcome. Okay, so, I'd like to make a motion, someone please, to make a motion for us to go into non-public. It is for negotiations, and I'm trying to find my number from last time, sorry, I know it's ninety-one A, and I don't have-
I would like to make a motion to go into non-public session ninety-one A three two, um, sorry. I don't know what's, here, the letters.
Letter A.
Is it A?
A three.
A two, or A three.
We did, oh, right, A three is secure. Yeah, I would say A two.
Okay.
Alright, do we have a second? Okay, and then just roll call?
Alright.
Bye.
Alright, thank you, thank you, everyone.